Thank you, Gail, and welcome, everyone, to the January 25, 2022, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Randy, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
No.
Thank you so much.
The flag is right here, right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy. All right, and we'll move on. Approval of the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to presentations. James, do we have a presentation tonight?
Yes, and tonight's presentation is actually, it's one that we had a full meeting, a couple of meetings ago, and so we had scheduled an update from Watershed Progressive. People may recall that the city participated in a multimillion-dollar grant opportunity with Watershed Progressive and several other partners in the Ojai Valley to try to develop projects that would help us have some water recharge projects. And so, a couple meetings back, Watershed Progressive was coming forward to apply for some grants. We had scheduled an update. It got bumped because that meeting was a very full meeting. So we asked Watershed Progressive to come back today and give the update portion of that. And so, I believe Regina Hirsch from Watershed Progressive is on the Zoom, and I will hand it over to her at this point. So Regina, are you there?
Hi, I'm in the meeting. Hello, City Council, thank you for having me back. And I just want to apologize, I'm a little under the weather. So if you can't understand me, please feel free to ask to clarify. And I probably won't be sharing my screen of my face tonight, but I do really welcome the opportunity to come back to the council and share some good news. And so with tonight, what I'd like to do is be brief and then hopefully come back to council as soon as we are finalized on this Wildlife Conservation Board funding, which will be final as of March 31, and be able to come back and give a full report out of all the findings. Tonight, we were going to walk through two things. One, a video that was made with some of the funding as a collaborative effort on why it's so important to harvest the rain. And also then walk through a story map that is going to be available for all the citizens of Ojai and the valley to be able to understand what they can do to help stream flow and water resiliency, as well as many other climate and fire and pollinator benefits for the city and the whole valley. So we're going to do two things. And with that, I think James, if you could share the video, and we'll just go ahead and watch this and then talk about it right after. Go right ahead. Just making sure, James, go ahead and start that video if you can. Thank you.
Okay, Regina, I think there's a technical issue. So I think James is trying to get that working, but if you want to start with part two, we'll come back.
Yep, okay, we'll do part two first. Okay, and again, thank you. Just let me give you an intro to that video. We'll come back to it. But one of the findings of this funding is that there's a lot that we all can do within the city to do, to come up with small, really important, low-hanging fruit, easy-to-reach activities, such as harvesting the rain when it does rain, whether it be from in a rainwater tank and cistern or putting it into the ground. And so there's a lot of benefits to that, ranging from fire to reducing heat, reducing wind impacts, of course, increasing the storage in our aquifers, reducing water quality impacts to our rivers and streams and drinking water, as well as, of course, water conservation. So that video was collaborative. We'll come to that in a minute. And I'm going to share my screen instead on the story map tonight. And again, I'm going to run through this somewhat quickly. And again, this will be a tool that we will give to the city for everyone to use and to be able to look at. So I'm not going to walk through every last thing in the story map, just to make sure to orient the viewers on a story map. Story maps are a GIS product that is available for anyone without GIS to access. And so you're going to be able to go in here and actually click and look around on maps and explore. So I want to make sure that's really clear. One of the main outcomes from this funding was a direct technical assistance program that the city spearheaded along with the funding and the Wildlife Conservation Board and the Ventura County Resource Conservation District, named the Land Resilience Partnership. And it really takes a lot of action that businesses, landowners, renters, that can come together and actually have those actions add up. What exactly is it, if you sign up for the Land Resilience Partnership, which is still very alive and active thanks to the city of Ojai, you can get direct technical assistance and help your property or your business or your backyard move towards a more resilient state? And you can have a site assessment, a catalog of different options of what would work on your property, a design plan, implementation projects, and have some help from some local construction, and even, yes, funding support. Some of that money that we just put in for is to help people get their projects funded, whether you have a business or you own some land or backyard. So if you want to sign up, there's a link here. And so all of that is embedded in the story map. Now, I'm going to skip ahead. There's videos, such as the one that you'll see later, that you can watch on this story map. There's definitions of the different tools that are available to you, like rainwater harvesting and rainwater gardens and gray water and pollinator habitat, climate-appropriate plantings, storm water management. All of these things are clickable, and you can learn more about them. So again, these are all the different tools that are within the assessment of the Land Resilience Partnership that was co-created with this money with the Ojai City. And so, a lot of these measures, such as this rain garden or bio-swell, can have a lot of different important benefits, such as fire resilience to it. And then we can also look for some of our land uses, such as up at Bezzant Hill and other places. We can look to creating a really healthy grazing opportunities or ag practices that can be fire resilience and create the culture and community that we want in the Ojai Valley. So again, there's another link here to find out more information. Here's the video that if we do get to a place that you can watch together. If not, this is where you will click on this, and you'll be able to watch the video on the story map. I don't want to understate this enough. These options that were selected give our community a lot of different benefits. And these benefits are listed here. I'm not going to go through them all, except for the main ones here. We can enhance our rivers and stream flows and improve water security together, right? There's a lot of other benefits here that you can read about and learn about. But again, these practices are low-hanging fruit. They create this healthy, resilient community that you can zoom around in and learn more about. Now, I was asked last time, so you will be able to move into these maps, where is this? Where is this all happening? Where do we concentrate? We focused our area and attention for the grant in the Topa Topa neighborhood and also in downtown south. We also worked somewhat in the sphere of influence for the city of Ojai. And so you can actually click on this map and zoom around and look through it. When you sign up for the Land Resilience Partnership, many of you had a site assessment, and you had someone come out to tell you and work with you and listen to you about what it is that you could use on your property that is low-hanging fruit. What are these practices? Here's an example of a land, a plan for a landowner. And you can see their infiltration potential that they're putting in is 275,000 gallons a year. Their rainwater harvesting potential is almost close to 90,000 gallons a year. Their gray water use potential is 50,000 gallons a year, and so on and so on. So you can play with this slider to get an idea of how this could work on your property. So this is just some of the features of the story map. Part of the report out here is, what if we all did this? And so we looked at all roofs within the city of Ojai in the sphere of influence. And what does that add up to? What if we all provided rainwater harvesting on our properties? And that, really, that number is 435 acre feet a year during an average water year. And of course, we don't kill. What does that mean, an average water year? Well, that's about 17 inches. If just the residents were to collect rainwater, we could harvest 299 acre feet of water, just residents alone. So with a simple rainwater harvesting program, we can harvest 299 acre feet on just residents. How big is an acre foot? Councilman Heaney, this is for you. An acre foot is a football field. Here's the Nordhoff football field, and it's just one foot tall of an entire football field. That's an acre foot. And an acre foot really is enough water for 10 people a year in California. It's 325,851 gallons. So that's what an acre foot is. And we're saying that there's 299 acre feet of rainwater in just the residents alone. Now, there's also some areas within Topa Topa and downtown south that we identified that could have curb cuts. And so as part of this, we looked at curb cuts. And there's 214 acre feet, for example, of just curb cut opportunity, but easy to reach curb cuts. So you can zoom around in this map, look at the different curb cuts, look at the tiers. There's different groups that are providing the Land Resilience Partnership. So if you don't, if you're listening to this and you don't live in the city of Ojai, some other groups are starting to follow suit, such as Miners Oaks, Ventura River Water District, Senior Canyon Mutual Water Company. There's a lot of different impacts to this. And I'm going to kind of close here in just a minute, even though there's more. We're finding per resident, on average, there is an immense amount of water quality potential for infiltration and water quality and ways to conserve water, just with these simple devices that we just mentioned, gray water, roof water, rainwater, irrigation efficiencies, storm water measures, such as curb cuts, low-flow fixtures, and climate-appropriate plantings. There's, this is actually from our assessments, per average, throughout the area from this grant. If we look at all residents in the sphere of influence and we apply this to just the residential properties, this would be able to save about 52% of all casidus water alone delivered to residents. So again, these are really small actions, easy to reach, that provide a bunch of multiple benefits for our community and that we can do as a community, sometimes in work parties. And they will add up and make our lives better. And so there is more water out there, and there is a lot of wonderful benefits and community-building events in our future. And with that, I'm going to stop. I want to make sure that there's time for questions. And if we get a chance to play the video, wonderful. If not, I really encourage you to come to the story map, and please watch the videos and look at the rest of the story map together. And I'll leave it to council if we have more time to watch. Oh, here we go.
Everywhere we look, every corner of our world, we see rapid changes and unprecedented challenges. Time, we all know, is of the essence. Yet there is hope right under our feet and all around us. When we look closely, we find that simple steps we can take to work with and revive natural processes and improve our quality of life are available at every business, every industry, every school, and every backyard. Capturing and storing rain is one example of a solution based on understanding natural cycles and processes. Simple strategies for storing, slowing, and sinking rain are available to all of us, no matter where we live. When we install rain tanks, build rain gardens, or replace hardscape at our homes and businesses, we not only save water, regenerate our land, and create habitat, we also become part of a movement for positive change that has already begun transforming some neighborhoods, cities, rivers, and watersheds. Rainwater capture and reuse can revitalize our land and communities by recharging our groundwater, preventing erosion, building healthier soils, and providing water security that protects us and other species from the risks of fires, droughts, and floods. The impact of many small actions adds up to large-scale change. The power of natural systems can be reestablished, providing clean and abundant water, deep, living soils, shade, and refuge from storms. A healthy watershed also means vibrant places to play, learn, gather, and connect with the natural world and supports our health, the health of our environment, and the survival of other species. Capturing and storing rain is one strategy among many that creates thriving places for us all to live. Together, we can create a resilient future. Let's start today.
Thank you, Regina. And for the residents interested, the website there, landresiliencepartnership.org, is where you can get more information. Also, just for council's information, consistent with that last meeting, the city moved forward on providing letters of support for implementation funding for some of the state grants coming out. So I think we're expecting to have some updates on that in around end of March, early April. And so we'll keep everybody updated and have some more updates at that time. So thank you, Regina. And then if there's any questions, I know Regina or I will be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Regina. Any questions from council? Beautiful work, Regina, thank you. Very inspiring, much appreciated. Looking forward to March.
Yes, looking forward to more rain.
Yes, absolutely. Hope you feel better. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And please don't hesitate to contact us for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to public communication. And just a reminder, this is the time where we discuss items that are not, or you discuss items that are not on the agenda. And so generally, we don't accept comments at this time that are agendized. So I just want to ask the council, are you, there've been a couple of requests to take comments that are not on the agenda? I mean, that are on the agenda earlier, yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine if people don't want to leave early.
Okay. And because we have so many comments tonight, we're going to limit each public comment to two minutes. So if you could, please, just respect that and just in the spirit of fairness and efficiency.
What just happened?
We agreed that if anybody would like to make a comment on an item that is agendized, they can speak at this time. We just have a few, though.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And actually--
And they know that we can't comment.
Yes, yes. At this point, I only have one public communication. It's Brian Aikens.
Are you ready for me, Mayor? Great, thank you. I'm here on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. I just want to thank the council and all here and on the screen for the time that you gave us a week ago. We very much appreciated the input. We appreciated the supporting vote. We appreciated those who voted and may have voted against us because by that, we learned. We've already had two official ad hoc committee meetings, countless numbers of phone calls. On February 10, we will be holding our next Historic Preservation Commission meeting and talking with Lucas. We are dedicating that meeting to talking about the downtown historic district. So we invite people who may have questions to come to that meeting and ask those questions of us, just so that we can find out early and be able to address them going forward. But again, we want to thank each of you for your time that you gave us in an extended period. We appreciate that so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Gail, any public communication on Zoom?
Let me ask, if there is anybody in the Zoom queue who is interested in speaking on this item, if you would use the raised hand function on your screen, I will go ahead and call on you, and you can speak. And nobody is raising their hand.
Great, thank you, Gail. All right, we'll move on to item number, or I'm sorry, the consent calendar. Is there a move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Ryan?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, we will move on to item number two. Permit recommendation to city council to enter into revised property Mills Act agreement between the city of Ojai and the owner of Ojai Historic Landmark #15, located at 420 Tico Road. So we will go ahead and open the public hearing. And James, you have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I'll be pulling up just a single slide. And while I'm pulling that up, we do have copies. Anybody who's interested, we have copies of the PowerPoints up on stage. And so we will be, I know it's a little difficult to see on the TV screen, so feel free to get one of those. Okay, so we have two Mills Act items on the agenda today. And so each of those are required to be approved in a public hearing. So as the mayor mentioned, we'll be opening and closing a public hearing and receiving a public comment for each of these items. The first, the first item is actually a Mills Act revision. And so it's for the property on 410 Tico Road, the property pictured in this slide. The property was designed by George Washington Smith, who's known for popularizing the Spanish colonial revival style, which a lot of people call the Santa Barbara style. I call it the Ojai style because I think we did it first. But so the property was actually landmarked as Landmark #15 in December of 2008, quite a while ago. And we entered into a Mills Act agreement with the resident at that time. For those who don't know what a Mills Act agreement is, it's an agreement for these landmarked properties that provides a tax incentive to the property owner. And the benefit to the city and the community is that they have to agree to restore and preserve the historic buildings using those property tax savings. And so we approved this back in 2008. We landmarked it in 2008. And so essentially, this is correcting an issue where in 2020, a work permit was approved to do some work on the project by the Historical Preservation Commission. And at that time, the County of Ventura Assessor's Office, when they reassessed the property, interpreted the language of the landmarking in the Mills Act to exclude a portion of the property. And so we've been working with the resident since that time to try to correct the issue because it's basically an interpretation issue. And so in working with the resident in the county, we realized that we needed to come back and just clearly state that the agreement was intended to include all of the land on the parcel. And so in December of 2021, the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the item and voted to recommend that the council approve that revision, revising the description to include the entire parcel of land. And so typically, the biggest question when we approve these items is what's the total fiscal impact to the city? How much are we reducing our property tax revenue? We did note that it's about $1,400 per year is the estimate. But in this case, it's already been landmarked, and it's already been Mills acted per our requirements. It's actually where we need to revise it to meet the county's requirements at this point. So there's no real new fiscal impact. So that's all a long way of saying this is essentially revising the agreement to try to make it clearer so the county will accept that language. So with that, staff recommends following the HPC recommendation to approve the revision to the Mills Act. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council? Randy?
I just had one, you know, on the, there's a list of--
The list of improvements--
Of the improvements over every 10 years.
Yeah, I think it's the very last page.
Yeah. It was interesting, as I was going through the packet, I was looking for that on the front end, and I'm glad you provided it. The only thing that I feel that is missing from this, maybe it's a question I can come to you directly and look at, but we're landmarking the entire site now. And generally, when we're doing that, there's a description of actually what we're landmarking. And I didn't really see this other than all land except so many square feet under the garage or something of that nature here, if I find it. So again, I just didn't have a complete description as to what's being landmarked. Hedges, trees, walls, you know, all the landscaping. There are some, there's a slight mentioning of some things inside the house, but generally, they're very specific. So I was just wondering if we just didn't include that in the packet because we'd already done this in 2008.
Yeah, you know, we should have included that, but I think the thought process was it's revising the language to already include what we had intended to include in 2008.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? Thanks. Okay, all right, we'll move on. We'll open the public hearing. We have two public comments, Randy Levitt and Brian Aikens.
Hi there, Randy Levitt, 410 Tico Road. We worked with the city in 2008 and had the property landmarked. We've been having terrible problems with the assessor's office misinterpreting our clear agreement with the city. The Community Development Department tried to clarify that. The assessor's office was not interested at all. And so we needed to revise the Mills Act agreement to get rid of any ambiguity. And I can go into that if you all would like. But that's the situation. We're also, in 2020, we received approval from the HPC to make some changes to the property that would correct, that in part will correct some issues that were designed-- part will correct some issues that were designed and done in the 40s with an addition there that we hired a really prominent architect in Santa Barbara who's done numerous George Washington Smith renovations. He did a fabulous job. The HPC reviewed the plans and approved. The city's hired an architectural historian, and his summary was that the the home and the property, and it is Mr. Haney, it is specified as the entire parcel, should be included in its entirety. So that's happy to answer any questions that that you may have. So we we also did all we can to work with the assessor's office first before coming back to the 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 city and not wanting to take your time. And unfortunately, they were pretty intractable. So.
Thank you. Pretty clear.
Thank you, Randy. All right, next we have Brian Aikens.
Hello here. Again, I'm here on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission. First of all, I would like to congratulate the Levitt family who are all here tonight in support of this, including the youth who I passed out agenda so they could do some social studies homework while they're waiting. So again, just to say that everything that Randy shared with you is what was presented to us and what we understood. This was they don't usually come back to us. But again, this was the county that was causing issues. The question has come up in landmarking property. Do you want to landmark some portion of it? Or do you want to landmark all of it? That's a question that we asked. In this case, there seemed to be an issue. Now it's clear. We fully support the revision of this Mills Act and hope for the residents to be able to take take advantage of it. Another thing that's important is the fact that the reduction in the Mills Act doesn't mean they pocket this money. Again, as Randy was pointing out, there's a clear designation of the different items that they specifically have to address as a part of the Mills Act in the in the next 10 years. And I'm guessing that will outweigh any little amount that they're going to get from the Mills Act savings to go toward the protection of this valuable resource to the city of Ojai. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Gail, any public comments on Zoom?
If there's anybody in the Zoom queue who is here to speak on this item, if you would use the raise hand function on your Zoom screen, I'll go ahead and call on you. And nobody's raising their hand.
Thanks, Gail. All right, we will close the public hearing and move on to discussion.
I would like to move approval of the staff recommendations with appreciation to the Levitt family for being great stewards of this property.
I'd like to second.
Okay, great. May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Yay. All right, congratulations, Levitt family, and thank you for doing the beautiful work and preserving that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to item number three. Permit recommendation to city council to enter into historic landmark property agreement, the Mills Act, between the city and the owner of historic landmark number 29, the Hummel House, 1105 Signal Street. James, you have a presentation?
I'm sorry. Yes, just very, very brief again. I know I won't repeat some of the things we just said, but it's another Mills Act agreement. This one is not a revision. It's a new Mills Act agreement. And so a lot of similarities, but a little different. So this potential Mills Act agreement is for Ojai Historic Landmark number 29, which what is referred to as the Hummel House. It's at 1105 North Signal Street. It's called the Hummel House because it was designed by Fred Hummel as a California ranch style house that has elements of the mid century modern style. And you can see that in the the picture on on that slide. It was also interesting. It it met all of the criteria, every criteria to be designated as historical, except for one. And maybe this is too much detail, but they don't have to meet all of the requirements. But this one actually did meet all of them except for one. And the one requirement it didn't meet was that it didn't have like that, the historical owner or like the it had all the architecture, all the architecture was historical, but didn't have like the the story that some of the other properties do. But it is interesting because it was built for Dixon Kelly, who served as the president of the Ojai Festival and the president of the Ojai Tennis Tournament at one point. So it's interesting that that wasn't considered historical, but it is a piece of Ojai history. And so everything else about the house, though, is historical. The city council and the HPC both reviewed the property and designated it as Ojai Landmark 29 in August of 2021. In December of 2021, the HPC reviewed and then voted unanimously to recommend that the council enter into a Mills Act agreement, which again, would provide tax incentives for the property owner in exchange for restoring and preserving the properties. And so this property, because it is a new Mills Act agreement, will have some fiscal impact. The fiscal impact is estimated at about $3,453 per year for the city. But as Councilmember Haney noted on the last item, the last page of of each Mills Act item has a 10 year timeline for the rehabilitation and preservation of the project. And looking at that timeline, you see that they the it's expected that a lot more money is going to go into restoring this property than that $3,453 per year, such as for 2022, there's $14,000 expected to go into sanding and painting the eaves of the home. In 2023, a $60,000 replacement of the solar system. You know, you can see from the 10 years, replacing the vintage hardware, fixing the the older electrical plugs that don't work, replacing vintage tiles. Just you see a lot of work that goes into these properties. So it is important that the city be aware of that fiscal impact. But I think the HPC and and staff acknowledge that there's a lot of value from these historical designations as well. So so having said that, the HPC unanimously recommended approving this Mills Act agreement. And our recommendation is is to approve it following that public hearing. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions. Oh, and the other one, thank you. The just one more comment is that the landmarking and the Mills Act is for the house and the surrounding property in this situation. So like the last one, it's the entire property. So.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council? Randy and then Susan.
Susan, go first.
Is the landmarking of the house and surrounding property due to the fact that far away from that, there was a change that doesn't that can't be landmarked? There was development?
No, no. So the landmark and the Mills Act is includes the house and the property. So it's actually landmarking that.
The whole property?
Mm hmm.
Okay, I thought you meant the surrounding property. It's a large property.
Yeah, no, it's the property at 1105.
Okay, I'm very happy to hear that. Thank you.
I think the whole property is eight acres, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a good size, about eight acres.
This number rings a bell for many years.
Oh, yeah, we know about that property.
You know what, any any time, when you look at the costs associated with maintaining a property of any of any of these properties, I you can see it's 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 real. It's not a cheap date. It's and they have to do this in a 10 year period. That's the the assumption that I'm reading into this, right?
Yeah, we require it like a 10 year rehabilitation and preservation plan.
Okay. And so who reviews that? That it's done? Is that something HPC does? Is that something that we do?
You know, we we don't, I don't believe we have a standing review. But I know that we've had situations where we've had questions about if items were completed, and then we we did review them at that time.
So we have so we have, go ahead, Matt.
I was just gonna add that staff is the first line there. The Community Development Department is the department that has that responsibility. And then the HPC has a role. And of course, council, if we look at modifying or canceling a contract.
Okay. I I'm not going to vote against this. I just, when I see stuff like this, we're giving up $3,400 a year of of tax dollars that could be utilized somewhere else within the city. So I see the exchange. In fact, I don't think it's fair. I probably think we should be giving them a bigger tax break if they're going to implement all of the changes that I see in this sheet here. But again, the only issue that I have is two things. The significant points of interest on this property. Again, it's a little vague. I've always wondered how you landmark an oak tree or a sycamore tree or a pittusporum or Kathy Noah would call it petasram. I just don't know how you landmark a living entity. But again, I'll I'll leave it up to smarter people than me to figure that one out. But so aside from that, like I said, I just look at is the fact that if we're going to be giving a rebate of some type, that we should have some form of follow up, just so that we're all in agreement that that's that that we're giving you this, you're giving us that. And that's obviously a well maintained historical landmark in our community, which has an incredible value. But I still think that there should be some form of follow up, whether it's through us or whether it's to HPC.
And I'll always take the opportunity when you queue queue up a conversation on property tax. I think it's it's just, I always try to point this out. A lot of people think that every cent they pay a property tax comes to the city, but we actually get a very small portion. The county gets the the majority of it. And so this is the portion that this is the entirety of the the portion that the city would receive. And the remainder, you know, is is the county's.
Do we know what that number is?
Well, I think.
You know what, you don't have to share that with me publicly. You can share that. I'll call you tomorrow. We can talk about that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think that's fair to the Hummel stuff.
Yeah, we can talk just in generalities.
Put out here in the public domain. There's no reason for that.
Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. We have one public comment. Brian Aikens?
Not very often we have two Mills Acts that come before you. We're very excited by by that because that is our purview with you is to protect the historic resources of the city. This is an exciting item. I know from hearing it personally that this is a house that David Mason hoped he would live for to have it landmarked, and now has been. And so we remember him in this exciting house. Again, like the Levitts, they took us all through the house, all the nooks and cranny, except for I'm still a little bit upset that I didn't get to find out where the bomb shelter was. I'm still verifying that. But they were wonderful to do that. And in fact, in that house, this doesn't happen often, in that house is a wall sized mural that was originally put in when the house was built that is still intact and in perfect shape from that. And that was called out in the landmark. And the owner wanted that specifically called out. We did ask the owner, all the property, part of the property. She immediately wanted all of the property landmarked. And that was before we had this issue with with the county. So again, very important of them for all of this, for the preservation, for specific items. The house was just a wonder to walk through, to see the items that were there when the house was first built all those years ago. To look at the dance floor, a big thing was having ballroom dances there there on the door and looking out across the east end. It just has so many wonderful things to it. And so we're happy to have it. Again, on who watches it, goes to staff first, but we in the HPC are happy to help in any way we can to, you know, follow up on the Mills Act. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Brian. Any public comments on Zoom, Gail?
I will check. And also, I'll check to see if we have any public commenters. But note that we have Tiffany Rochelle, the the homeowner in. So I will bring her in first. And I see one other person who has their hand raised. So I will bring her in after I bring in Ms. Rochelle. And if there's anyone else in the Zoom queue who's here to speak on this agenda item, please go ahead and raise your hand, and I will call on you. So first is Tiffany Rochelle. And council, if you want me to to have us bring her into the meeting as as on your screens, I'll go ahead and do that. But for now, I'll just bring her in to talk.
Thank you, Gail.
Tiffany, you're you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I just wanted to chime in and thank you all for your consideration and just your comments about our home. I know long before I my husband and I bought this home, there was a lot of history. And we are so pleased to be a part of saving this home. And you're right. I mean, there are things like a Sears and Roebuck kit, 1960s bomb shelter with the full, you know, kit book and the murals from 1962 from a prisoner, a World War II prisoner of war that was commissioned by Dixon Kelly and his wife. And she was the heir to the Jergens lotion family. And she was a ballroom dancer and heavily involved in the Ojai Women's Center. So there's a lot of history there. And we're just, my husband, Paul, and I, we're just so, I mean, we just feel so honored to to be able to live in this home and just preserve it and love it. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tiffany.
And next we have, we had one other person. Let me see. Katrina Schmidt, did you want to speak on this? Okay, she has her hand up. So I'm going to go ahead and bring her in. Tiffany, or excuse me, Katrina Schmidt, you should be able to talk. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say this house is incredible. I've been inside and it's fantastic. And the views are incredible. I just had a question about, and it's just really a question, about having the whole property landmarked. It seems like there's a, I remember, is there a climbing wall on this property? Like a big building that has a climbing wall in it? Because I think that's interesting, like any out structures like that would be protected and couldn't be changed, correct? Or they would have to go to.
So.
Historic Preservation Commission?
So it's the land that's landmarked, and then the and then the main structure, not all, not all structures?
Oh, okay. That was that was just a question because I wouldn't think the property owner would want to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's that's just a comment I had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Katrina. Any more comments, Gail?
No further comments.
Okay, thank you. Well, move on to discussion.
Yeah, I want to make sure I understand the nodding heads and exactly what. So that climbing wall structure, which has something of a notorious history, is in fact, could be removed theoretically without having to go through Historic Preservation Commission. Is that correct? Yes, because the climbing wall structure is a is not a contributing element and not a contributing element to this to the landmark status. It's not a character, sorry, character defining element of the landmark. Thus, the climbing wall and any other related modern outbuilding could be removed. That removal would take an HPC review to confirm that whatever might replace it doesn't negatively impact the landmark. But it would be a not a character defined element of landmark and is thus not protected. Thank you for the clarification. Underlying everything. So that just if I just finish the thought, the net effect is any new additions to the land have to be assessed for an impact to the landmark, which is the house and the land. But the owner is okay with that, so. And my understanding is the owners agree to that. Yeah, thank you.
And we're closing the public comment. So go ahead, Susan.
That's what I had in mind when I asked about the surrounding property was that climbing wall. When it's the right time, I'd like to make the motion. When it's the right time, I'd like to make the motion in honor of the late Dixon Kelly.
Go ahead, Randy, and then we'll have a motion.
Before the motion, Mayor, and thank you. Again, just getting clarity to this, usually these, these reports we receive are 45 pages long, and they're really clear and concise as to what is and what isn't. And this seems to be rather vague tonight.
There is further detail in the attached Historic Resource Report that admittedly isn't in the binder, but was available.
So it's not attached? That's what you just said?
Correct.
It's, we'll, we'll make sure those are attached. It looks like to save.
Again, it's just information that, that we should receive, and it's also public information that the public should receive.
Right.
Because again, when I do the short version here, it, it doesn't say all the land, does it? It defines what is being landmarked here as the defining characteristics. So when you have this discussion about a climbing wall, and then you're saying that to remove the climbing wall, we have to go to HPC so that they can determine that whatever you're taking down, which isn't landmarked, can be taken down, which doesn't make any sense to me if it's not landmarked. Why do I need HPC's blessing? And then I heard, well, you need their blessing because of the ground underneath it, and that you don't put something there that doesn't conform. Is that what I just heard?
Yes, so in short, the climbing wall itself is not protected, but modifying the property would be protected, or would, would have to be reviewed by the HPC.
You guys can see how complex this is. Okay.
Part of it would turn on what would be replacing it. If they simply remove the climbing wall, that would, as I recall, just be a minor work permit, and thus the staff or H would be HPC or staff, and I'm just double-checking it. But if they put something else in replacement, then they're going to HPC for sure.
Right. Well, well, just my final thought on this is whoever landmarks a home in Ojai is, is, is doing something of significance, importance to our community. So we should be grateful and thankful that they're doing that. That's all I can say on that. I think it's a good thing. Susan?
If Susan's motion's still active, I'll second.
Yeah, it's still active.
Can you repeat that?
Adopt a resolution. I, I make a motion to adopt a resolution to enter into, into a historic landmark property Mills Act agreement between the city of Ojai and the owner of Ojai Historic Landmark Number 29, known as the Hummel Property, at 1105 North Signal Street, and we're all greatly relieved that this is happening. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
I'll second. Okay, roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, congratulations, Tiffany, and thank you for taking such, yep, give her a hand. And family, and I've danced in that house. It's beautiful. So thank you for taking such good care of it. All right, the bell is tolling, and we will move on to number four, the pickleball program update. We have about 30-some public comments, so just a reminder, two minutes each, and if you could just respect that so we can keep things moving. Thank you. James, we have a.
Mayor Stix?
Oh.
Excuse me. Hold on, we're, we're still dealing with the staff report. Thank you. May I give the staff report? Okay. Okay. Thank you. So just briefly, it's just a very brief report. We opened our pickleball courts at our City Hall campus on January 11th, 2020, so just over two years ago. The pickleball courts were converted from the prior tennis courts that were in place for the Smith Hobson's as part of the Smith Hobson Estate at the, which became the City Hall campus. And so recently, we had had a couple of meetings where we had a lot of speakers regarding pickleball, and the city council asked for an update on the status. So this item is intended to give an update, as well as identify some of the issues raised by either proponents of pickleball, or, or residents, or, or various parties. And so i- in those two years, it's very clear, the courts are, are very popular. We, we have very heavily used courts. My understanding is that the courts are well-known, and that people seek these courts out, and so the courts at, at City Hall have become very popular. Pickleball has become very popular within Ojai. The, the there has been several, are, an increase in the use of these facilities. We've gotten reports of people waiting in line for an opportunity to play, and I would say we see that relatively frequently. And so we've heard from some of the various parties, different, different issues. On February 25th, 2020, about a month after the courts opened, we heard from members of the public who lived, who lived or owned property near the, near the courts regarding noise concerns related to the pickleball courts. After that time, for the next few months, the city worked on developing some sound mitigation options. We identified acoustic fence as the optimal sound mitigation option, and installed acoustic fence along the south and east side of the, the courts. And so that was installed in June of 2020. And so play continued throughout that period, and play has continued since. The city council reviewed around that time and also implemented some, or gave direction to, to staff to implement some other potential solutions, such as requiring green zone paddles, which is currently required at the courts. Green zone paddles reduce the noise from gameplay, and then also implementing specific hours for pickleball play. So those are still in place at the courts now. The, more recently, since play continued, but more recently, on December 14th, 2021, we heard from both residents and property owners who were still suggesting that the noise issues continued. And then we also heard from pickleball players who were asking for more court space and more playtime. So this report is intended to give that status update of, of how it's, this has proceeded over those two years, and then also to look at a couple of different options. We looked, in the report, we list some of the options that we looked at, such as whether there's additional sound mitigation opportunities. The consensus there is, there's a couple of things we could do, but probably we don't think that additional sound materials will address the, the, will satisfy all of the, the neighbors and property owners. We also talked about requiring further reduced noise equipment. My understanding, and I, I think I saw Howard, and I'm sure he'll speak to this, is that there is some new lower sound equipment that's coming out, that there, that the pickleball players have said that they will test out, or the pickleball club. And so that is one thing, one potential option that we can still look at. The other options that we talked about, as far as providing more time and, or, or more hours, would be looking at courts at other facilities within the city. We talk a little bit in the report about Libby Park and Court Six, and, and we, we did some sound testing there that showed some potential at that location. We also talked about potential partnerships with other agencies to use some different facilities, but those have not been explored. So if city council were interested in those, staff could explore those further. And so in summary, this report goes through some of the options and provides a status update, and staff is available to answer questions if council has any.
Mayor Stix, I just had a text message that someone watching at home said the sound is off. I thought I'd just bring that up for James to look into. Yeah, I don't, I, I just got a text message saying, "Sound is off." I asked still at 7:04 and at 7:05, and it said yes. So.
James, can you confirm?
Whatever that means. They're watching on Zoom, I think. Or no, they're wa, maybe they're watching on Granicus.
So James just gave us the thumbs up that the sound is working, so.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. All right, we'll take questions for staff, and let's make sure council members to keep these questions, and we'll, then we'll take the public comment, and then we'll move to discussion. So any quick questions?
Yes. James, did you mention that, it must be in the staff report, that, that the tennis courts will be completely open to tennis players during the tournament? There will not be pickleball during the tennis tournament, at least not in Libby Park.
So we discussed the, we discussed the potential of play at Libby Park in the report, and we, to, to your point, we mentioned that we had met with, with some of the Tennis Association representatives, and they indicated that the major concern would be the ability to have the Ojai Tennis Tournament uninterrupted. And so their request, that I, that I think the city council would, would likely consider is that if there was to be play at any of those tennis courts, that it would be, it would not occur during the Ojai Tournament, and we would actually potentially resurface the courts prior to the tournament each year, and then close for a brief period. So that would be one, it's one challenge with the, the tennis courts.
I just had a, a couple of quick ones. This report's pretty in-depth, and I just wanna know who asked for it? Who asked for something like this? It, the title states, "A pickleball program update", seems like it'd be pretty simple. There's an increased population of pickleball people in the community, with the pickleball club having 160-some members, and standing line or standing room only to play, and that we still have concern from six, six citizens, and maybe one or two property owners of the noise. It seems like that's an update. But we get pretty extensive into this, and I was just wondering, who determined that we should go to Court Six? Who, you know, why didn't we go to Court One? So I'm just concerned that we did something out of order. And I don't know who authorized it. I don't know if we voted on the council to create another committee, in that we appoint them to hold hearings with individual groups concerning pickleball usage in the community? So help, can you, can you help me to understand all of this a little better?
Yeah, and your, your point's taken. I think, you know, this might have gone a little bit out of order, but I'll say that the genesis of this was the December 14th council meeting, where various parties came to the city council and asked for consideration. The city council at that time asked for an update. The, the start of the Libby, I'm sorry, the Tennis Court Six at, at Libby Park was as a result of meetings requested by the different groups, where the groups had asked to meet with, with, because of the Brown Act, a couple of council members and staff, and that was one of the items that was discussed by each of the groups. So, so it was discussed at those times. We identified in the staff report that there are other options, but that is the one that was discussed in those meetings, so.
Well, again, when you say discussed, who, who brought up the idea that we would move the courts and move them to number six? Why didn't we discuss, move the courts, and give them five and six? Or give them seven and eight, or give them one and two, or give them all four?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we had asked each group for feedback on, you know, what would work for each group, what would be preferable, what would be a potential compromise, so.
And so my last question is, what groups did this, did these council members actually speak to, or do they need to, should they divulge who they spoke to? How is this gonna work? Because again, we're, again, we have two council people, because of a Brown Act, going out into the public. Am I correct? And, and, and putting forth hypotheticals, and, and I'm gonna say, for the good intentions, they were trying to solve a problem, but for the bad intention is the fact that there was no direction given to them to do this.
So the pickleball group, I believe, was the first group that had requested a meeting with two council members, so that, that meeting occurred. And then the neighbors became aware of that meeting and requested to meet with the same two council members, and then.
So the neighbors saw the meeting on the pickleball courts, and then they requested to have one?
I, I think they just, I think that they became aware of it. Somebody must have, you know, somebody mentioned it, or.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to get to the facts here.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions before we move on to public comment?
Mayor, I have a question.
Hold on.
Randy, if you're not, well.
Can we wait till discussion? Ryan, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up on what Randy said, because I, that wasn't my understanding of the timeline. So James, if you could clarify, you're saying that the genesis of all this was a 12, was the 1214 council meeting where members of the public showed up? But wasn't there a meeting on the courts prior to that? I mean, I was communicated with from pickleball people and other people well before the December 14th meeting, that there was something that transpired out on the courts that was causing concern, and there was all kinds of confusion. People didn't know what was going on. I hadn't heard about it. I had no idea. I was totally blindsided, saying I hadn't heard or had any idea about it, because at that point, there were people coming in my office saying, "Well, they're trying to move us off of City Hall. They're trying to do this." So calling that the genesis, I mean, it was, wasn't there a meeting out on the courts prior to 1214?
Yes, yes. The meeting with pickleball was prior to that meeting, I believe. There was a meeting prior to that meeting, which is why people, which is why there was attendance on the December 14th meeting.
Okay, so would it be fair, I mean, unless your understanding of the term genesis is different than mine, then this clearly started before that council meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to public comment. We'll start with Mike Borders, then Mark Weil, and then Dwayne Williamson, please. And just a reminder, everyone, two minutes. Thank you for your, for your respect.
My name is actually Dwayne Williamson. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Ojai Valley Tennis Tournament, and I wanna discuss some of the concerns, particularly about the option of moving to Court Six. And I wanna bring the council's attention to Resolution 10-18 dated April 27th, 2010. The resolution, and I quote, "A resolution accepting any and all improvements in real property known as the Lower Libby Tennis Court Complex, and recognizing and giving property to the Ojai Valley Tennis Club for the use of the Lower Libby Tennis Courts and facilities for the annual tennis, Ojai Tennis Tournament, and for club-sponsored youth clinics and nonprofit tournaments." The Ojai Tennis Club actually has three events, not only the tournament that everybody knows about, but we also have the Holiday Challenge Tennis Tournament and the High Performance Clinic, which are kind of the things that are mentioned in the resolution. Based upon this resolution, the Lower Libby Courts need to be made, made available for these three events. It could be used on a temporary basis with the use of temporary nets, temporary posts, temporary lines, as long as it can be converted to a tennis court three times a year. What the courts could not have are permanent posts for the nets for pickleball. In order to put those permanent nets in, you'd have to embed the posts into the concrete and drill holes to remove those to get ready for a tennis court. It would cause significant damage to the tennis court and cause it to be resurfaced. The resurfacing of a tennis court on the best of conditions is about $8,000. So to convert this back and forth two or three times a year is gonna be upwards of $20,000. Also, the question of painting lines, do you paint over the entire tennis court, and then come back and have to paint with, with pickleball courts? You'd have to come back and do that again.
Thank you very much, Dwayne. Appreciate it. Mike Borders, and then Mark Weil, and then Julia Macy, please.
Hi, I'm, I'm taking Mike Borders' place, Borders' place. I'm Mark Weil, 309 Park Road, 25-year resident of Ojai, and on the Board of Directors of the Ojai Tennis Club. And I just wanna say first off, I think I speak for all the board members, that we are in total support of the pickleball community here. We really are. We wanna be part, we do. We wanna be part of the solution, not part of the problem. We're not against anybody. We're for everybody. So just, also, I wanna thank you guys for your service, too, because I know how tough it is these days. It's tougher for the school board, but it's tough for you guys, too. But we thank you. We thank you. Just really, just again, just to be sure you're in touch. Just really, just again, just to be sure you're in touch, you know, the Ojai is like the Wimbledon of Southern California. It's not, you don't go to the Lawn Tennis Club at, in Wimbledon and take out a court. You just don't do it. So I'm hoping you guys can come up with another solution, a really positive one, a really great one for the pickleball community that doesn't involve taking something away from the tennis community. Ojai is known as a tennis Mecca, really worldwide, not just in the United States, but worldwide. I know people, I go places and they go, "Oh, you're from Ojai? Oh my God, that tennis tournament." So just know that it means a lot. Arthur Ashe, Billie Jean King, you know, the tennis courts to me are like the oak trees here. They really are, they breathe, they're organic, they're part of the fabric of Ojai and you can't just take one out. You just can't, just like you just can't take an oak tree out. So please keep that under consideration. It really means a lot to us and I think we can find a solution for all the pickleball players you can come up with, but let's all, let's all live together, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next we have Julia Macy, then Colleen Reed, and then Greg, help me out Greg, Lynnemeyer, I'll say.
I will be very quick. I just play pickleball. I'm in my late 80s and I love the game and I want it to continue with plenty of courts. And I give my time to Howard.
Thank you, Julia. Next we have Colleen Reed and then Greg Lynnemeyer and then Julie Bojer, let's see.
Hi, thank you. I just also want to say that I'm here in support of pickleball. I love it. I think it offers a great health and wellness opportunity, especially during the pandemic where we're not in gyms and the psychological and social well-being of our community as well. And I hope we can find a solution and I also cede the remainder of my time to Howard.
Thank you, Colleen. Next Greg Lynnemeyer and then Julie Bojer and then Patrick Murphy. Is Greg here? Nope. Okay, Julie? Patrick Murphy? And then we have Joe Hammerand and Allison Leslie after that.
Hi, Pat Murphy. I've been a resident of Ojai for 58 years, ran the tennis program for the city for about 15 years, been on the Parks and Recreation Commission for three years. And I'm here to speak in favor of the pickleball courts and as much as I respect Mr. Borders and Mr. Wile behind me and what they've done for tennis, it's time for the council to be proactive instead of reactive. I think we've been reactive for the last few years regarding the pickleball situation. Much to the comments earlier, we do need more courts. The courts are overflowing, we need more time. My suggestion has been, and it was when I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission a couple of years ago when this first came up, two courts at Lower Libby, convert them to eight pickleball courts. They can have them back for the Ojai Tournament, we can do that if you wish, but I don't think in this day and age, eight courts are needed for the tournament anymore. I could be wrong, but if you took Mark's academy away from Libby Park, as much court time as they, as they use, which is great, most of the courts here are vacant 80% of the time. So you have a facility here that's standing ready for somebody to do something with and I completely respect the history of tennis. Nobody played more tennis, I think, in this town than me in this place right here today. But it's time to move forward. I mean, the average age is skewing upward in this town, the tennis players are skewing downward in this town, pickleball is skewing upward in this town. I mean, you just look at the math of it and it's the right thing to do. So more courts, I think, are needed and you can put them to at Lower Libby and I think it would make at least the pickleball community happy, maybe not so much the tennis community, but it's, I think, a compromise that's worth looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next we have Joe Hammerand, then Allison Leslie, and Melissa Olson.
Good evening. My name is Jo Dean Hammerand, or Jo, that's fine. I returned to Ojai after 45 years with one friend from Nordoff still living in the area. I discovered pickleball, which is a social sport, and I enjoy being active with friendly competition. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the United States and can be played by young and old alike and there are many tournaments which can be played, or I'm sorry, many tournaments for pickleball, which are, which if Ojai had a tournament, would be a boon for the economy of Ojai. And we're, let's see, if Ojai were to have a similar tournament of pickleball as we have the collegiate, annual collegiate tennis tournament. And I think that's about all, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jo. Next Allison Leslie, then Melissa Olson, and then Karen Wilson. Thanks, Allison. Next we have Melissa Olson, Karen Wilson, and then Pam Johnson. Okay, so now Howard, you have six minutes. I'm counting his too, don't worry.
I'm okay with that as, so long as, if someone else wants to pass their time to someone else, I mean, we have to be fair.
Sure.
We can't just be passing it to Howard.
Okay. So now we have Karen Wilson, then Pam Johnson, then Lorinda Strong.
Good evening. I'm Karen Wilson. I do serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission at the moment and I have two things to say. One, I believe that the timeline in terms of meetings and genesis of this update is completely erroneous. There were a number of meetings and a number of suggestions that came perhaps from misguided folks. So in order to stop putting the cart before the horse, I would ask that the city council refer this matter to either or both the Parks and Recreation Commission and any ad hoc committee that you think would be appropriate. We do need to get this straightened out because the timeline, the conversation that, or the, of the conversations that you were given tonight is not correct. Second, I, and I have written to the city council many times, so I am repeating myself, but I do not understand why the city council is not following its own municipal code and allowing pickleball to continue and be treated like every other recreational activity in the city. Where the courts are now is a public park. The signs say it's a public park. Public activities can take care, be taken, can happen in that park and the city needs to get behind pickleball and stop treating it differently than all the other recreational activities the city offers. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next we have Pam Johnson, then Lorinda Strong, and then Annette Campbell. Okay, to Tim. So Tim, now you have four minutes. Okay, now we have Lorinda Strong. Yes, thank you. And then Annette Campbell and then Peter Dutch, please. Okay, Randy's got four.
Howard's got six, Tim's got four.
It's like Vegas here. Okay, all right. Lorinda Strong just gave away her, Annette Campbell? Anybody? Okay, all right. Next we have Peter Dutch and then Carolyn Bennett and then Steve Campbell. Thank you, Peter. Next we have Carolyn Bennett and then Steve Campbell and then Linda Wilson.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Bennett and I played tennis all my life and I had to quit when I was in my 50s. And then I was introduced to pickleball about 20 years ago and because of these people and so many more in Ojai, I now play pickleball better than I ever played tennis. So how can you hate a sport like that? It's fantastic and Ojai should be on the cutting edge of this movement, which is just burgeoning. And I give whatever's left of my time to Randy, because I play with him all the time.
Okay, next we have Steve Campbell, then Linda Wilson, and then Leslie Clark. Okay, Tim's got six?
He's got eight now.
Okay, thank you, Randy. All right, next we have Linda Wilson and then Leslie Clark and then June Grist, please.
Okay, so Tim.
Okay, next we have Leslie Clark, then June Grist, then Karen Quimby.
Okay, I'm not going to give my time away. My name's Leslie Clark. I was an avid tennis player until bad knees made that too difficult and I discovered pickleball. Along with many new friends, I've been enjoying returning to the new version of the sport I love at the City Hall pickleball courts. But our enjoyment has apparently been disturbing the neighbors. We are playing there because you, the city council, gave us permission to use it and improve it and we built it into the most consistently-used public park in the city. It's a huge success. Pat yourselves on the back. When the neighbors complained, you limited our hours to appease them, even though no other public courts have these limited hours. This concentrated our numbers and the volume increased. You then spent the money of thousands of taxpayers to build sound-mitigating walls for three people affected and we helped you. We respected the limited hours, we helped build the sound-mitigating walls and even bought quiet paddles, but that was not enough. You, the city council, have done everything to appease the neighbors, short of a ban on laughter, which might be problematic. You have a wonderful opportunity to develop Ojai as a pickleball destination where tennis is fading. The neighbors will not be satisfied until the beautiful courts are abandoned. If abandoned, they will return to a dilapidated state of benefit to no one. It's not a perfect world. We all have to put up with things we don't like, but we live on the planet together and need to compromise to get along. City Council, I think you've done, gone overboard to make the neighbors happy and still they are not. You have asked us to compromise and we have. So let's try this. Give pickleball a court somewhere else, lower or upper Libby. This will spread us out, reduce the noise level at all, at the City Hall courts and make good use of underutilized Libby courts or wherever. And for the neighbors, let that be enough already.
Thank you, Leslie. Next we have June Grist, then Karen Quimby, and then Robin Gerber.
Hi, I'm Julie Grist. I'm a fairly new pickleball player and my family of six are all starting to play. You know, these are 20-somethings, 30-somethings, 50-somethings. So I really hope you can keep the park active and the pickleball court at City Hall. It's a wonderful shady place, a lot of camaraderie happens there, it's lovely. I do think we need more space because it is hard to find time to play. So I hope, I hope you will hear us all and move in the right direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. Next we have Karen Quimby and then Robin Gerber and then Sandra Hansen.
Mayor, council members, my name is Karen Quimby and my family owns the apartment buildings located at 408 South Ventura Street, the closest residences to the pickleball courts on the city campus that you've measured at 128 feet away. I'm speaking on behalf of our tenants who live in those apartments and other neighbors affected by the noise from the pickleball courts. Noise from pickleball is a problem in communities nationwide. This is not the matter of a few disgruntled, oversensitive neighbors. We read with interest the city's report that details the city's attempts to mitigate the sound intrusion on neighbors of the current courts and their acknowledgement that the mitigation efforts have not succeeded. We also appreciate that the city report provides what appears to be a win-win-win solution to the problem, which is to swap a tennis court at Lower Libby for the pickleball courts on the city campus. In fact, the options the city report suggests of the options, the only one that is feasible is swapping the courts because spending the money to place additional acoustic fencing along Ventura Street of the current courts will not prevent the sound from reaching the second-story bedrooms of our apartments, nor will the requirement of the pickleball players using green-zone paddles to reduce the noise be successful because it will be impossible to enforce without an enforcement officer sitting courtside during all hours of play. The pickleball players also seem unwilling to entertain this option. You all heard the pickleball players at the December council meeting actually boo their own pickleball leader when he suggested that they could use green paddles to reduce noise intrusion. We encourage the city council to vote tonight on the win-win-win solution, which is to move the pickleball courts to Lower Libby, which allows greatly increased hours for pickleball players with bathrooms and parking to boot, and restore the City Hall campus court to its original use as a tennis court. This way tennis players have the same number of courts to play that they currently have.
Thank you, Karen. Next we have Robin Gerber and then Sandra Hansen and then Shar Michaels.
Nope, not win-win-win. You know, in this contentious time, you know, please don't pit hundreds of well-intentioned athletes against each other by trying to come up with this supposed solution. It's not a good solution for those of us who are still playing tennis, and I'll be joining you soon enough, but I'm still playing tennis. And the truth is, you've not gotten good information. The rec department hasn't really done its job. I love Louise, but in terms of this report, you don't have the full information on tennis. The truth is, we can't get courts on weekends, weekend mornings and there are a lot of other unintended consequences here that you haven't thought about. So I think Randy, you're absolutely right. The process hasn't been right and we need to fix that, so you hear from everybody. But let me say this, and our wise commissioner from the rec department is especially right. The complaints by a handful of residents should not limit, so limit, the use of the pickleball courts. It is wrong. Come on. This city would have, would have been in its rights to use that property for many other things, that by the way, could have been much more distressing. The city cannot please everyone on every use issue, nor should personal relationships of council have anything to do or interfere in any way with your duty to weigh the desires of hundreds of athletes who are coming out to play against what is really a few residents. So it's up to you to work on the equities, that's your job, that's what we hired you to do. There's some other good solutions here. Soul Park, I commend the members of the council have really been working to get Soul Park under our controls as city. That's where it should be. We can use it for pickleball and all kinds of other wonderful things. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next we have Sandra Hansen, then Shar Michaels, and then Randy Roth.
Hello. I'm a new pickleball player and I've been a resident of Ojai for over 60 years and I have never seen a group of people that is so congenial and so much fun to play with. You can go as a single person and there's always a partner there and it really is such a growing, growing sport that anybody of any age can play. So I, it distresses me that it disturbs the neighbors, but you know, people having fun disturbs other people. And I agree that Soul Park, if there was some way to use the tennis courts out there that are never used to turn them into pickleball courts would be an excellent idea and I'd like to concede the rest of my time to Tim.
Thank you, Sandra. Next we have Shar Michaels, then Randy Roth, then Skippy.
Evening, council. I'm Shar Michaels. I've been a resident for 40 years here in Ojai. Used to be tennis and found pickleball a couple of years ago. It's been, you know, it's a new game. There's just really one thing that I wanted to share and that was really much what she just said, that I don't know of any other sport that's more pro-community and inclusive than pickleball. Without need for a partner or a plan, you can just show up and go engage in physical exercise and social interaction. I just think it's such a rarity in sports altogether that it's something that I hope you'll continue to find resolution for. We definitely need more than the, you know, the courts that are here and yeah, I think it's a win-win. I think it could be something that was an income generator for the future too, having large-scale development. We obviously have the population that supports it. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Shar. Next we have Randy Roth, then Skippy, and then Brenda Kraut.
So Mayor, Mr. Roth has
Oh, okay.
Five minutes, according to my bookkeeping.
Okay, do you want to wait and hold your minutes and we'll take Skippy and Brenda and Scott White?
Sure. Hi, my name is Skippy. I play pickleball every day and I love it. I was a PE teacher for 35 years. I was a PE teacher for 35 years, recently retired. I miss my kids, I miss going to school every day, but now I got a new family. Please don't take our courts away. Thank you. And I invite any of you to come out, I'd love to be your partner. Bring it on.
Next we have Brenda Kraut, and then Scott White, and then we'll go with Randy Roth, Howard Cho, and Tim Kraut.
I had to take my gloves off to get my paper open. It's cold out here. One thing that I feel the council has really failed to recognize in all of this, is that our pickleball group, I mean, here's just a small portion of them, that is a big group of voters and taxpayers. And it seems that, you know, at this point, you've been listening to a very small group of voters, and it's supposed to be, I know that each one of you, I'm sure, I mean, I know, that's the way the laws are, is that you won your seat on the board, on the council, through a majority vote. It wasn't through three or four neighbors that yelled the loudest and got you a seat there. It's a majority vote, so you should be considering the majority when you're making regulations. And at this point, I don't think that you've been doing that. All of the actions at the pickleball court have been to benefit, and I've been listening to the people that are very minority. There's three to six people, we've heard. Well, there's hundreds of us, and like I said, we're voters, we're taxpayers, and like another vote, another speaker mentioned, there is no other park in the city that you are limiting the hours of play, that you're limiting what kind of equipment they can use. Are you going to start requiring the baseball players to go back to the wooden bats? Because those metal bats are very noisy, if you've ever listened to those. So, and I think that, I mean, there's adequate space for us at Libby Park. It's a very underutilized public space, and I think that our pickleball group should be given priority over a private tennis academy that operates for profit. And I think I had two more minutes, but didn't somebody give me minutes, Randy?
Yes, you did.
Yes, I did, okay. Thank you.
Wink, wink.
Go for it, Brenda. Okay, so I think that you need to start paying attention to the majority, because that's who got you elected. That's who you're working for, is all the people in Ojai, not a select few. And the pickleball group, I mean, the tennis group is getting smaller and smaller. You come by, if any of you start walking through these courts, 80% of the time, they are empty. During the times that they are used, because we've walked through here many times, we've given reports to you about the times that we have kept track of it, and the use on the courts at the most is 40 to 50% on a single court during a year's period of times, on average. So please start considering the majority, and don't just go with the minority of the loudest voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Next we have Scott White, then Randy Roth, then Tim Kraut, and then Howard Cho.
Hi, good evening. My name is Scott White, I've been a resident of Ojai for 32 years, and know many of the folks here, and really appreciate all of the comments that have been put forth to you today. I'm a tennis player, but I've also become a pickleball player. I think it's a fantastic sport, a lot of fun, I agree with every statement, very social, very active, very energetic. We are fortunate to live in a community with such energetic and passionate people on many, many topics. Think of all of the different activities that we have here in the Ojai Valley. And now we're talking today about a topic of recreational sports. Now, why can't tennis and pickleball coexist? I think all the comments made about the court near the City Hall are very well-taken. You're basically favoring a few instead of the many, in this case. The courts on Lower Libby, while I know they're not always utilized, they are utilized a lot, they always seem to be packed when I want a court, so it seems to me that we need to find another solution, and I urge this council to think of another solution. There must be some way that we can have courts for pickleball, but not by punishing tennis players. Let's try to make it, try to come up with something else, such as Soul Park, I think that's a wonderful idea. Maybe there's some other ideas that should be considered. But clearly, you know, there should be a need to have both of these things. Pickleball's a growing sport, tennis is not dying, tennis is thriving, and certainly has a young generation coming along. We should figure out another solution to this dilemma, and keep this idea of recreational sports very active in Ojai, and I urge this council to think of those things and consider them all. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next we have Randy Roth. How many minutes does Randy have?
Randy had, Randy had...
Six.
No, Randy had five, but I took one away. Oh, no, 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 Randy has five, it was Tim I took one away and gave to his wife. So Randy, you have five.
And brevity is the soul of wit.
I hope I not use all of the five minutes. My name's Randy Roth, I am a pickleball player. I play with enthusiasm, but not much talent. Nonetheless, I enjoy the game a lot, because of the camaraderie and the exercise. My friends have talked about the joy of pickleball, but I want to talk to you about money, dollars and cents, tax revenues. Before I was a pickleball player, I was trained as an economist. I got advanced degrees at Harvard University and the London School of Economics, and I want to draw your attention to a real asset that the community has right in front of it. If we could develop this program into a tournament, we could draw people from all over the world who would spend their money here in Ojai. So far, without any effort, we've had people here visiting us from India, Denmark, the Czech Republic, Japan, England, Canada, and multiple states around the nation. The people who are here, these pickleball pilgrims, they come here and they spend money at hotels and restaurants. Other cities around this nation, Naples, Florida, Beaumont, Texas, and even locally, Camarillo, have proactively sought to develop their pickleball program, in addition to being a source of joy and pleasure for the citizens, but as an actual revenue generator for the city. And I really think that the city of Ojai has an opportunity that should be exploited. Thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Next we have Tim Kraut, and then Howard Cho, and Tim has...
Mayor Tim has, Tim had 10, and now he has nine, because we gave a minute to his lovely wife.
I won't use all that time, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Our pickleball group used an abandoned public space, an old tennis court, that had sat for five decades, and we repurposed it into a thriving, usable, enjoyable, equitable community facility. This is when the rub started, with a few neighbors. This space was vacant, but now it's used by the community, both young and old. I think this attitude of controlling the use of a public facility near one's residence is very selfish. It is a public park. We, the pickleball group, have gone over and above being considerate of neighbors, we have done all that the city has asked of us, and more. We have tried to come up with acceptable compromises and mitigating measures, but to no avail. The cost of repaving the vacant tennis court was $9,032, which was borrowed by the city. The city then allowed our group to do all the final court installation, which consisted of applying a subsurface primer, the installation of sleeves, post, and netting, and the application of the final color coats. Total cost was $7,300 for materials only, which was paid by the pickleball group. Labor was also provided by the pickleball group at no cost to the city. Based on the contractor bids, which I obtained and provided to city staff, the completion of these courts were valued between $20,000 and $35,000. Since the completion of the pickleball courts, we have received many compliments and praises for one of the most beautiful facilities in the county by both locals and visitors alike. This was made possible only by the cooperation of the city and the pickleball group. Now that we have grown substantially by both new players and tennis converts, we need more court space. Let us share in the underutilized Libby Park courts. Libby Park is already under the city's control, so there's no need to look outside the city. Working together, we can recreate the model that exists at the City Hall campus, and have more beautiful pickleball courts for everyone to enjoy. Thank you. The only other thing I want to say with the rest of the time that I have is, all of you are invited to come out, I'd be glad to show you the game, and I welcome you out, and all the tennis players that want to learn the game, I'll help you out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right, and now we have Howard Cho, who has...
If we're giving Howard Tims, no, no.
No.
Howard has six minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. James, actually, I wasn't even going to speak tonight, I was just going to introduce the people who were going to speak on behalf of pickleball. And so what I'd like to do is, this is just going to be off-the-cuff, some comments that I'd like to make, to maybe shed some light on what's going on in the city of Ojai in regards to pickleball. I mean, here we are, the city of Ojai, and we have this issue, neighbor against neighbor, engaging in fisticuffs almost, and that's unlike us, so I hate to see that. And Mike Borders, by the way, you skipped him, he did sign some kind of the speaker card, he wants to speak after me. I had a discussion with Mike and Dwayne Williamson, who represent the Tennis Association, last night, and we talked about, what do we do with this issue, as we are all friends and neighbors, and there should be something that we can do. And I know that there was an ad hoc committee formed to discuss the various options, and he was for that, I told him I was for it, on behalf of the pickleball community, I've talked to Tim about it, we're all for it, at least Tim and I are all for it, Leslie Clark is for it. What can that hurt? So I think the city should go ahead and, go ahead and appoint another ad hoc committee, just like you guys did before, so that we, and let's get Karen Quimby in there. She is the leader of the neighbors that are most affected, and we can all meet, and we can discuss it in a civil manner, and work out some of the problems here. So I'd like to say that to begin with, in an effort to compromise. Now, what do we have here? We have three groups whose interests are contrary to one another. We have the tennis people, who want to keep the tennis courts inviolate. We have the pickleball people, and I think it doesn't, nothing else needs to be said about how great pickleball is, or that we want to expand it, because I know you folks who want to expand it. I mean, there's no argument there, and even Karen Quimby knows it's great, and she wants to see it expanded, too. Everyone knows that, so there's no issue there. The primary issues are, how are we going to expand it? And one of the, I talked to Mike, and you know, Upper Libby, apparently, the Libby family gave that, the Upper Libby courts, to the city, and there's a, some deed restrictions where you can't even consider giving the pickleball community the upper courts. I don't know that, but it should be investigated. And Dwayne has indicated that there's a possibility of using, or going to, Lower Libby Court 6, but there are various problems with that, restriping, repainting, things like that, only temporary facilities. And I can tell you that the people that I've talked to, Tim included, the temporary facilities just won't cut it. I mean, you know, you roll out a net, and so on and so forth. We're used to being next to you folks, next to City Hall, and look what we have there. That's what we expect for the city of Ojai. So a temporary facility is not a very good option for us. So let me, I wanted to say that, we should explore Court 6, because I don't know what the numbers are, I don't know if Mark Weil and the rest of the tennis community can live with giving up Court 6 as an alternative, but that should be looked at very closely, in my opinion. Now, the other thing I want to say is this: Karen Quimby and the homeowners want us gone from City Hall. She's made that very clear, and if you look at just the face of it, the argument is, hey, she represents some people who claim that they are really, really adversely affected by the sounds of the pickleball courts. Now, as Tim indicated, the pickleball community has done everything that you have asked. The hours have been cut, we're using green paddles, I have an even quieter paddle, Tim has ordered 16 of these.
Yeah, Howard, appreciate it.
All right.
We do have two blank cards, no names, what, does anybody want?
Give that one a minute.
Yeah, you want to finish?
If you don't mind, I'll finish real quick.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll be real quick, just another 20 seconds. We all know that everyone has their own separate opinion and reaction to just about any stimulus, pickleball included. So I know for a fact that certain people have gone around in the neighborhood and asked people, neighbors, "Does the pickleball sound affect you?" And they have been told, "No, you know, it doesn't bother me, it's fine." So I don't disbelieve Karen, or the people that she represents, when they say, "It bothers me." But whatever you do, it's always going to bother someone, and that's just the fact of life. And you look at all the issues confronting our society, and right here in our community, same thing happens. Whatever you do, there's going to be someone, one, two, three, four, five, six people who are going to complain. So I would urge you to consider, how loud is the noise going over there? You know, what are, I've asked Karen to let me into one of her tenants' apartments to see for myself how loud the noise is, and we had a discussion, and she said, "Well, it's subjective, isn't it?" And I said, "Well, yeah, because something that is nothing to me, if someone else says, 'Hey, man, that really bugs me,' who am I to say that that person is wrong?" But we have to use common sense when we deal with this type of situation. So I would urge you, and James Vega, to investigate that. You know, are... You know, are we, how loud is the noise going over to these people? Are we reacting?
Yeah, Howard, I'm going to have to ask you to, and now, and, does anybody want to claim these cards with no name? Okay, thank you.
I had a card earlier, Mike Borders.
Okay.
And I got skipped over somehow. I'm a good friend of Howard's, and I really appreciate his comments. I think he has a good perspective about it. I'm on the board and past president of the Ojai Valley Tennis Club, so that's the hat I'm wearing. I've played pickleball, not as often as these guys. I might be able to get into it, I believe, but I'm still a tennis player and I'm on the Ojai Tennis Club Board. Our perspective is that we would love to see a permanent home for pickleball in Ojai. I think it's pretty apparent that it's a growing activity. It deserves a permanent home, and I, and I think maybe City Hall Court could be part of that permanent home, but I think they need more than that. However, I don't think it's at Libby Park. There, as we've mentioned, there are a lot of restrictions on the ability to put any permanent pickleball courts at Lower Libby. Upper Libby is out of the question due to existing resolutions, historical preservation, I mean, it's a historical landmark, the Upper Libby Courts can't be used without approval for anything other than tennis without the Historical Preservation Committee. We also have a resolution that gives the tennis board, the tennis board approval over any changes to the tennis courts at Upper Libby. However, Lower Libby is a possibility on an interim, temporary basis. As Dwayne tried to point out, and as I think both of us included in our written comments that we submitted earlier today, there's a lot of logistical problems in trying to use Court Six or any court at Lower Libby on a temporary basis and then convert it to a pristine tennis court for our tennis club events, which happen year-end, December 31st weekend typically. We also have a mid-March event, and then we have our Ojai Tournament in late April. It's not feasible to somehow convert pickleball courts to tennis, to pickleball, to tennis, to pickleball, to tennis over that timeframe. And if you did it, it would cost $70,000 a year.
Thank you.
One, one, one other thought. We're all in favor of the ad hoc committee. We think that's a great idea. We think the solution is to try and find a permanent home, continue using City Hall for a year until we can find a permanent home, conceivably used, temporary. It's not a great solution for the pickleball community, I know. I'm sure they don't want to do it. You could maybe use Court Six on a temporary basis for a year, two years. At some point, we need to find a permanent home for pickleball, and I'm sure if we have the city, the tennis club would be willing possibly to contribute financially. The pickleball community could raise some more money.
All right, thank you.
Civic association would be interested, and we could get this thing funded.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Okay, normally, we don't take comments in the middle of an item. We have one public comment, council.
That's fine.
Yeah, we've got one. Dale Hanson?
I just want to say, I agree with everything that Pat Murphy said. I think he stated it best. Those tennis courts, the lower tennis courts are really not used that much. And for all those folks who think that those few disgruntled neighbors are out of line, if they had a tennis, a pickleball court next to them, they'd be up here complaining too. It's because they don't have that. And as far as saying that all these people who vote for you, many, many of the pickleball players live in Ojai, but many of them do not. And so it's just not right for you to single in on these few homeowners. The genesis of this started when pickleball started. It didn't start from any committee. We were calling James, we were, any, any person that walked by from the city council, we'd snag them and complain about it. It's been going on ever since pickleball started. Please consider what goes on all across the country where pickleball courts are installed by neighbors. It just doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. All right, we will move on to discussion.
Mayor Styx, this is Gail. We have...
We have public comment on Zoom, Gail?
Yes, we have three people who want to speak, who are in the Zoom queue. If anyone is in the Zoom queue that has not raised their hand, that wants to speak on this agenda item, if you would please raise your hand, I'll go ahead and call on you. And the first person I'm going to bring in is Bill Miley. Mr. Miley, you are unmuted. You should be able to speak if you're, yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. The pickleball noise penetrates the neighbors during all hours of play, eight hours a day, seven days a week, 56 hours, excuse me, 56 hours a week. No one knew at the time that the smack of the pickleball by the pickleball paddle created an impact sound, also called an impulse sound. These are high-frequency sounds which standard decibel meters can't measure. They were never measured. Players go home to a quiet environment. Nearby residents can't go home because that is their home. There is no way to get away from the sound when the courts are in play. Some pickleball players know they disturb the neighbors, but rationalize, we are many in numbers, and there are few. The proposed court swap with tennis court number six is a good start to mitigate this reoccurring environmental intrusion. The proposed plan is a good next step to remedy nuisance sounds occurring over the past years. Swapping the court will give more hours of play, and turning the Smith-Hobson Court into a teaching tennis court is a really good idea. It is the next step in the right direction towards a pickleball center at Soul Park with multiple courts, the ultimate goal. Just remember, the sound is intrusive every hour you play. Possibly, this is a joke, but if you bought all the property, it would, the problem would go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And next, we have Mark Bodycomb. Mr. Bodycomb, if you're there...
You told me you re-...
I'm sorry?
What? I re-... I...
And Mr. Bodycomb, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I, I just want to throw in my voice with the pickleball players. I, I don't want to, don't need to reiterate what others have said, but, you know, again, I've a 30-year resident here, tennis player, and now an avid pickleball player, both my wife and I. I, I think a lot of the points that others have made relative to the long-term benefits of, to Ojai as a community, you know, both, you know, as far as its reputation, as far as its finances are, is important. I, I like the idea. I'd never really thought about Soul Park, but I think that's a good idea. But bottom line is, I think that the city, really, the council really needs to get behind an ad hoc committee, and I'd like the idea of the recreation committee, you know, ad hoc or being involved in, as well, and just coming up with a viable solution that really supports this growing and important sport that takes place in Ojai. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
And we have one more person, Katrina Rice Schmidt. If you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I play both tennis and pickleball. I'm a tennis fanatic and play pickleball for fun, sometimes with friends. But I believe that it's, that it's a misguided attempt to move pickleball from Smith-Hobson to City of Ojai's historic landmark, number 11. The Ojai Valley Tennis Tournament and Civic Courts are landmark. The tournament started in 1896, and it, it needs to stay at Libby Park, and it just seems that the noise is simply going to be displaced from one location to the other within basically the same block. Persimmon Hills, the, the houses on Ventura Street, Montgomery, they will be affected by this noise. Pickleball deserves its own complex away from residential homes, and if not at the Smith-Hobson Courts, possibly explore installation at, near the skateboard park. The school district's looking for something to do with their property. Plenty of room there, or Soul Park or another property. Please don't impinge on the tournament and the courts and the, and the tennis play there. I have 30 seconds left, and I'd love to give that to Mark Wile. He'd like to clarify something.
Really quick, just to clarify something for everyone, I want to make sure the council knows this. James and city staff actually limits how much time we can use, the academy can use the courts at Libby Park. If you allowed me to, I would use all eight courts for six hours a day. So there are plenty of tennis players. Tennis actually grew about 30% in 2020 and 2021. So it's not, it's not dying or decaying. It's on the rise, baby. Okay, so we're all happy, we're all going to work together, and we're all going to get this done. Okay.
Thank you, Mark. All right, now we will turn to discussion.
All right.
And thank you all so much for your comments and your participation.
Shall I go ahead? Shall we just go down? So Mayor Styx had the brilliant thought some, a couple of months ago, she envisioned, and I share her vision, of having a pickleball paradise, have Ojai be known as a pickleball paradise. And you're absolutely right, we, it's a growing sport. The issue of noise is nationwide. There's no debate that the noise, if you, if your residence is as close as these people live, that problem is not, we've tried, we've made a good faith effort and to solve the problem. It has not been solved, and that is why tonight, our task is to find an interim solution that will make the residents, the tennis people, and the pickleball people happy. Okay, there's probably going to have to be some compromise. I, I want to say that if you were one of the residents, and I know if Robin was one of the residents, she'd be leading the charge against the people playing. Okay, I know you, Robin, and you would not like that noise. And, and the, and the pickleball people want and deserve to have normal hours. And the, that's not the agreement that we have with the residents. We made an agreement with the residents, and I want to honor that agreement, that we cannot extend the hours. So we need a place where pickleball can grow. It will keep growing as the years go by. They've, with, with an hour, with the limited hours, they've outgrown the current location. So keep in mind, and as I say this, this has nothing to do with how wonderful the sport is, how healthy it is, where, you know, we all, we, we know how much joy this gives you, how, how great it is for your personal health, for the economy. I know that people, the Ojai Valley Inn is sending people over, but Ojai, eventually, I hope that we have control of Soul Park. Our goal is to extend the bike trail to Soul Park so that you can continue riding your bike, as many players do, and I love seeing all the bikes out there. So, you know, our task is to find a solution so that the neighbors are not impacted by the noise. The tennis, the court will not be abandoned. It will be used for, for, for tennis playing, for education through the rec department, And believe me, we have, you know, maybe some of you are new to this conversation, but we've had many, many meetings about this, and I, I don't know if you realize that, that due to the pickleball, there were changes made. The Children's Memorial had to be, Mark Park had to be moved, and, I mean, the noise issue is not just a bunch, a small number of neighbors complaining, needlessly complaining. There's a difference, like even, I mean, I, I've been to two of the residents' home and listened to the noise, and I, 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 I have to remember that listening to the sound for 20 minutes is different from listening to the sound every single day when, while you're trying to have breakfast in your patio or lunch, or try to arrange your schedule so that you go home when they're not playing. I mean, this is not a place where the pickleball, where pickleball can grow and continue to thrive and grow. We have to find a solution, and I am in favor of at least, as an interim solution, exploring whether it is, I, my understanding is that we can work out the issues with moving pickleball to the park as an interim solution, and then looking at Chaparral, Soul Park, possibly other properties that are away from residents so that the pickleball players can, can play I think that's all for now. Bill?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Is that a specific proposal?
It's a, a specific proposal?
Yes, that's what I'm trying to...
Well, I don't, it's, it's a, a summary of a proposal.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
I've actually, the council member here who, as soon as I, I, I did the, I kind of pushed staff to do it, initial inquiries about Soul Park and find out how much the county's been losing on their operating model out there, and I've been probably making more, more noise than anyone else about, let, you know, we really need to try to push the county and try and do a long-term arrangement where we could take control of that facility, because we're, we're hemmed in with our park and recreation program. We need room, and this is just one example. And so if the mayor would indulge me, I'd like to ask Mr. Kraut, because I'm not clear the answer in terms of long-term solution, whether a, a pickleball complex at Soul Park in fact is something the pickleball community would embrace. Could I ask for a response to that? I'm talking long-term now, not tomorrow.
Pickleball paradise.
I'm not a long-term speaker.
I just wondered, I, I wasn't clear, hearing from everyone, whether a, a purpose-built complex in Soul Park would be something the pickleball community would embrace or not. Not, not having an admission gate, you know, take that down, be a totally different type of park.
Well, my first thought would be, you don't own that. You don't control that. You control what's in the city.
We're talking about if we could get a long-term lease.
A hypothetical.
A hypothetical? I think if you, if you do some research, the city years ago had been asked from the county if they would accept Soul Park, and they denied it, the city did.
That was a long time ago.
Steve Olson was on the council at the time. He told me that.
Long time ago.
Yes, it was. But...
I, I'm asking, what if that option was controlled on a long-term basis, long-term lease, and we could develop a proposal? Again, I'm not talking about tomorrow, next, you know, even the next few months or anything like that. Is that an option the pickleball people, pickleball community would embrace or not, if it was viable?
What, what information have you received from the county that would indicate they would give that to you?
What we're negotiating with the county right now.
Okay. I, I don't really see that happening right away. I mean, being another public agency, but you're talking years down the road.
Maybe not. I just was trying to get a clear indication, whether or not that was something the pickleball community would embrace or not.
Sure. If you owned the property or had the property now, yes, but that's, I see that years down the road.
If we could get control, it would be an option the pickleball community might at least... least embrace.
What are we gonna do in between?
I I understand, I'm just trying to get a clear indication. Thank you. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah. As far as I I, you know.
We're so cool.
We got it, we got into this because this was a a growing phenomenon, we saw dilapidated situation, we decided to rehab it, it's become successful beyond anyone's imagination, which is a wonderful thing. You know, Frank, I you know, I'm I'm a it's a lot to consider here, and I'm not, you know, not sure exactly what my my feelings are in terms of what to decide tonight. But one thing that I I do take some seriously is we probably, we really have circumvented our usual commission approach. We really haven't asked the Park and Rec Commission to look into this. And I'm not saying that to delay this, but I think there's some legitimate criticism there that we typically ask for input from commissions, and we haven't asked them to look into this. And I I I'm seriously thinking about that problem, as a problem. So I'll probably talk more later, but I wanted to get a feeling for the long-term feel uh solutions rather than just short-term.
Thank you.
Randy?
I'll wait for Ryan.
Ryan?
Okay. Well, you know, I I I think it's completely disingenuous for this council to say that we didn't know it was gonna happen. It was really clear, we knew the noise issue, we knew exactly what we were getting into. I stated on the record that I didn't think it was a good idea for the city to sanction what could potentially be a nuisance down the road. And now that we let it happen, now that everything went forward, it's unbelievably successful. And now apparently people's heads are spinning, well, how did this happen? I remember asking when we dealt with this at the very beginning, that, you know, what is the real reason why Soul Park doesn't work? And there was never a good answer. There wasn't. But now we've let it happen. And I said then, and I'll be consistent now, that if we're going to allow it, and it's gonna be successful, that it's not appropriate then to undo it. We have had nothing but success, we knew exactly what the problem was we got into, and now we're all trying to shove the genie back in the bottle like we didn't know what was going on. And that's just a sign of bad governance, bad leadership. And the reality was that this council, against some my, what I thought was a better idea, decided to adopt this problem. And now that it exists, are acting like we had no idea it was ever gonna happen. And I I just don't get it. I'm I'm for allow allowing them to stay on the court, we've added, we've spent money, we went through this entire process, we acted like there was some sort of sound mitigation fence that was ever gonna work, knowing that it was never gonna work. I never believed for a second it was gonna do enough to really deplete the popping sound that exists out there. I have no doubt that the people who are complaining about it are legitimately complaining about it. I don't think that, you know, turning this into a financial opportunity for the city, it's funny, when people want something to happen in the city, we say we could turn it into a financial opportunity. But then the public doesn't want more people in Ojai ever for most of the time. So I don't think that's really genuine either. If the pickleball people have a bunch of support, and they have a place to do it, and they're willing to raise some money to keep operating and expand to areas that aren't being used as much, I'd love to have more ideas on the table, but I'm not prepared to tell them, because they've been so successful, and because it is a beautiful court that they put together, that we knew exactly what we were getting into, that they have to move because of that, or that they're no longer appreciated to use it. If we want to figure out a way to move them where they'll have more capacity somewhere else, that would be great, but that's not what we're talking about. I'm not even sure what exactly we're talking about. But that particular piece of land has turned into something really beautiful, used extensively, and I don't have any, I I am not gonna be a hypocrite and sit here and say, pickleball people, darn it, you did too good a job, get the heck out of there. Now, as far as using Court Six or any other courts, I've talked with a number of people on this, I know lots and lots of pickleball players, I'd say in the dozens and dozens. I've had so many conversations with them, I've talked with Howard, I've talked with the Kraut, I've talked with everybody. I thought they were talking about taping the courts, I thought they were talking about not having to repaint them, I thought they were talking about temporary things that could be moved out easily without cost at the at the time of the tennis tournament each year. If we can do that, I think it makes complete sense to be able to use those courts. If it's gonna cost us twenty thousand dollars each time, I don't understand where that suddenly came up. It was not about painting when I met with everybody, and that does change things, because there's no way that I think the city should be paying to move in and out of using those courts for what is a much longer traditional tennis tournament that has a huge cachet and deserves the respect it has by using whatever courts it needs, if it actually needs those courts. But if there is a way to temporarily allow the expansion and not have it be a significant impact on the courts, and not have it be that those courts are taken out for the tournament, then I'm all for expanding it. I mean, why do we have this constant situation in Ojai where as soon as something becomes successful, we want to kill it? We we allowed something to happen, it's incredibly successful, and now we want to change it because it was as successful as it's been. And I just don't, I mean, we had people literally banging pickleballs against paddles at City Hall in the meeting, telling us exactly how loud it was gonna be. So this was an adoption that the council said they're not concerned about that noise factor, and now all of a sudden we're concerned, there were people who complained about it then. I just don't understand the hypocrisy of moving backwards after we knew exactly what we're getting into, especially after it's been as successful it has been. And I think it's really neat that in a city that has limited recreation opportunities, and there's not a lot that's gone on positive in the recreation realm for a long time, that we have something that's really successful, that really hits our demographic solidly. And until there is an absolute option that is better than moving from that court, then I have no interest in trying to change or penalize the pickleball people for their success.
Mayor, may I correct? Something was not accurate. So Ryan, are you still on the, are you still there? First of all, correct me if I'm wrong, but Ryan wasn't on the city council when we approved this. And I realized a few days later or a week later, and I publicly admitted that I had made a mistake voting for this, because I realized we had, among other things, besides the neighbors, I realized we had a memorandum of understanding with the the children's memorial garden, and I couldn't, I realized that that a quiet garden could not coexist with the pickleball court. So I publicly admitted that I had made a mistake, and I have been trying to undo that mistake ever since, and and finding a better, a better solution.
Well, if you're asking me a question, Susan, I definitely was on the council, and this was approved.
That was Johnny Johnson and Paul, was it, am I?
It was Mayor Johnny Johnston, but Ryan Blatz was on the council at that time.
Okay, my mistake, you were on the council.
Okay.
I wasn't think, I was thinking perhaps you advocated from the podium, but I was wrong, sorry.
Uh, Randy?
Well, this is a a live discussion, huh? Brought to you by Ojai City Council. You know, there's a lot of things that are going, that are that are working through the public's minds, and I think what, I think the first thing that comes to mind is how this discussion started, how it was passed on to the pickleball people, the tennis people, Karen, if she's still here, her, it seems like we just stirred up a hornet's nest, and which did nothing to help us or to help any of these individuals, any of these groups. And we just created a state of chaos. And then we also, for the pickleball people, we created a state of uncertainty. Because if you talk to any one of them, first of all, they think you don't want them. Two, they think you you want to kick them out of the court that they have sweat equity in. Three, you're trying to shove them into some corner in the community that that corner doesn't really want them either. This kind of reminds me of the the cannabis thing, yeah, we we want them on Main Street, no, we don't want them on Main Street, we want them down in their own red light district. But so again, I think this conversation got way ahead of itself, that's the first thing. And 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 so for that, as much as I would like to say thank you to the two council people that initiated this outreach, I think I think they're the ones that have brought this this thing that's presented to us tonight, that they're the ones who created this mess. And they need to recognize that it's not acceptable. It's not acceptable to go out into the public arena and create this much chaos. So we heard tonight that we need an ad hoc committee. I sat on the first ad hoc committee. We talked to every one of these groups. Didn't change. The tennis people want their courts, I get that. You know, as you were talking tonight, I was thinking to myself, you had four dedicated courts at one time, and then your tournament got bigger, probably when the Pac-12 said, come on in, we'd like to come here and be a part of it. I don't even know if the Pac-12's coming back, you guys. So I'd like to hope it is, but there's 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 nothing that's been indicated to us as a council that it is. So I would love to say yay, but I'm, but again, that uncertainty weighs over all of us. If the word temporary has a different meaning, has a meaning to every one of us, what does temporary mean? Temporary means we get to use Court Six or Court Five on what basis? We don't get to use the City Hall Court because we're temporarily using this court? I mean, this this whole conversation is so convoluted, it's so sad that we brought this upon ourselves.
So what do you want to do?
Well, I'd like to say something, I'm moving forward, I think the question is always, what do we need to do? We realize that we're in a pickle. No pun intended. And I just want to say that I I salute all of you, I think it's an amazing sport, clearly, and movement, and the camaraderie, and and the friendships, it's a beautiful thing, you've created a beautiful thing here, and we need to promote you and create that pickleball paradise, figure out where it would blossom and grow. And generally, cities have two types of parks, passive recreation and active recreation, and they're both wonderful. And you can think about all the parks in cities you've known, and cities around here that are active and passive. And historically, that area behind City Hall has been passive, a place of quiet meditation, place to hear the birds, to enjoy nature. Congratulations to James Vega for getting all that funding to restore Lower Stewart Canyon, and we finally have water running there, so thank you very much, that's very exciting. And ideally, we'll get some school kids in there to learn about nature and and regenerative agriculture. And that spot is incompatible for active recreation. And sometimes we do make mistakes, and sometime, and then we need to figure out how to fix it. So we're all on the same team, Team Ojai, we're all in this together. So I would say, yes, let's let's involve the the Parks and Rec Department and figure out a solution that works for most of us most of the time, knowing that some people will be dissatisfied, that's always gonna be the case.
So Mayor, before you cut me off, I just wanted to state that this facility has not always been passive. This facility was completely landscaped, probably twenty-five, thirty years ago. It had paths put in, it had a number of different types of gardens. This place was built for public use, not passive use. So I I again, I have to disagree with that statement that it's that it's passive, I don't disagree with the two types, but I'm just telling you, this this facility has been utilized by this community for forever. Now, when we allowed that landscaping and that improvement to go in the dumpster, which we did, because we didn't fund the maintenance of it, you can ask Kathy Nolan of this, you can ask Aqua Flow who dedicated tons of money to it. So now all of a sudden, we give something to a group of people, and through their sweat equity, you know, they maintain that place. The city doesn't sweep the courts down, they do. They changed the nets, they buy the nets, they paint the courts. Now all of a sudden, we're gonna say, thank you, but you don't belong here. We're gonna create a committee and go find another place for you. Quote a paradise in Ojai. We're already in paradise. I don't need another paradise, I'm in it, right here, this is paradise. So I so I'm sorry, you know, I don't know what another ad hoc committee is gonna do, except push this dog further down the road, and it and it just, I just don't see it happening. And and I think that these people deserve a lot more respect from this council than that they're receiving right now. And and everything that we, every condition we placed on them, they have lived up to it. And yet here we are, thank you for living up to it, but we're gonna take it away from you. Every agreement what we that we made with Ron, every agreement that we made with Karen about soundproofing and all that, we did it. And it's still not good enough. Hell, you want to improve this facility, add another court. That's what I would do. I don't need, I don't, we don't, we don't need to find another place, we can add another court right next to this one.
I just want to make one correction, passive recreation is public, just quiet. Okay, Bill?
Yeah. First of all, I would agree that any further considerations should not be an ad hoc committee. If we're gonna do anything in terms of further structured deliberation, it ought to be in regular order with the Parks and Recreation Commission, first and foremost. Second of all, the one of the the issues the pickleball people have brought up, which I'm very sensitive to, is that in the hot months, it's really a problem being limited to daytime and not being able to play in the in the cooler hours, after dark. So frankly, that's one of the reasons that I started thinking about options in terms of some of the tennis courts and what what the restrictions are and what and all of that. And there's been a lot of assumptions made, a lot of statements made about costs and so on and so forth. And I, again, would like to submit that perhaps one of the things that the, if we decided to have Park and Rec Commission do this under regular order, we could try to not here at the diets tonight, that try to nail down some of those facts and figures in terms of what the actual costs of of temporary use would be. So I, you know, I don't think there's any consensus here. I think there's a, I I don't think that we should take a lot of blame for having something wonderful appear, or that, and I will stand by my original support for taking a dilapidated situation and turning it into something productive. I have, I I'm gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, be a apologize for that, my goodness. But I do think that we need to, you know, rather than an ad hoc committee, if we're gonna study this further, because we don't have a consensus here, I think we ought to seriously put a time certain, a time certain action that we we delegate to the Park and Recreation. And that's not just to throw things down the road, but frankly, we've we, that's the way we normally do things, and we haven't done it. And the other thing I think is is only illustrates, again, why we need to push really hard for getting control long-term of Soul Park, and I would submit, we have an opportunity for having a innovative, aggressive discussion with the school district right now as well. And we ought to, we, you know, we have the beginnings of a recreational facility there, and we, I think it's time for that aggressive discussion as well. So I'm not, I know it sounds like I'm just weaseling, but I I'm not talking about taking anything away now, but I know that the the pickleball people need, especially, they need, they need hours at night under the lights, they need a better restroom facility, but I don't think we we make any precipitous changes and consider doing regular order with Park and Rec Commission.
Oh, Mayor, may I say, okay, I I have a different opinion, Councilmember Wyrick. I feel that we've had enough meetings and discussions, I would be in favor of giving staff the task of of finding out if it is practical, the logistics of making the swap to Libby Park and turning the present location into a quieter tennis education court. And I I also take issue with the way that Mayor Protem Haney is depicting what we're doing, because we care deeply, we would, if we made a swap to Libby Park, we would be, we want to make it just as beautiful as your present location, we would work with you so that you'd be happy. And you would have, as soon as we were able to do that, you would have full hours, you'd have the, you have nightlight, you wouldn't have to play during the heat of the day, you'd have, I would hope that you'll, you know, You'd have, I hope that you'll, you know, there's many, many advantages to making the swap as soon as possible. And so, I would give, my inclination is to make a motion to give staff direction to solve, you know, to come back with a report. I heard some figures thrown around, like 70,000 a year. That was not my original understanding. My original understanding was that financially, it was doable, because the cost would be shared between the city and what, you know, you could, I'm not sure who else paced the other half, the tennis people or the...
Currently, it's, yeah, between the tennis association and the, potentially the civic association with the city currently. I think what was being proposed would have some additional, or what was being discussed would have some additional costs.
You know, any misunderstanding is due, I would say, it's due to the Brown Act. I couldn't pick up the phone and tell Randy who attended the meetings, because each meeting had representatives, you know, for the residents, representatives from the tennis tournament, the tennis people, and then the pickleball people. And each time, we had, what I felt was a wonderful, productive conversation, that we were all working together for both an interim solution and a long-term solution. I thought, and I could have picked up the phone, as soon as I got home, I would have, but due to the Brown Act, we can't do that. But if you want to know who attended, I believe that James can provide the names of who attended and, you know, all of that information. We didn't try to do, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, I guess, but there was no way that we were trying to do anything behind anyone's back. You know, we really had hour-and-a-half-long productive conversations.
So, I appreciate that, Susan, but here's where I'm coming from. If you wanted to go out and interact with any one of these individuals, you had the right to do that as a councilperson. The minute you brought another councilperson into it, you created an ad hoc committee. You also, you also created an expectation that you were representing the council by meeting with each of these individual groups. I'm just saying, that's what you didn't recognize on the front end. I appreciate you apologizing on the back end. But we can't work that way. If we're going to create an ad hoc committee, we do it through the council. We vote on who's going to be a part of it. We send them out into the community, and we let them gather as much information as possible, come back to us, so on and so forth.
What do you think about clarifying?
Let's bring it back to the chair. Let's let Randy finish.
What I'm hearing tonight is that we need to investigate the possibility of relocating the pickleball courts from City Hall to somewhere else in the city. That's what I'm hearing tonight, and that we're thinking of assigning that responsibility to the Rec and Parks Commission to hold some public hearings, to gather as much information, make a recommendation, and bring it back to council. That's what I'm hearing. Am I correct, Mr. Wyrick?
Well, I wouldn't say the charge is to move necessarily, but to delegate, trying to get the facts and figures straight to the Park and Rec Commission without any presupposed conclusion. It'd be my opinion.
All right. So, having said that, I would, as long as we are not moving the pickleball facility as it sits right now, as long as we're going to open up the hours of play to these people so they're not subject to conditions that no other community member is, has placed upon them, in other words, they can play from sunrise to sunset, and they can play seven days a week. And I think that's what we should do, restore what we've taken away, give them the opportunity to play. And while we're in this interim trying to relocate Paradise, I would be in agreement and amenable to go along with that thought process.
Councilmember, I mean Mayor Protem Haney, I distinctly recall our city manager stating a number of times each meeting that this was, that the ideas that we put forth were not coming from the council, that everything that we put forth had to be aired out in a public meeting. We made that very clear to all the participants, and that's what we're doing tonight. I am absolutely not in favor of extending the hours at the present location. That's why we're having this meeting, so that we can give you, give the pickleball players a location where they can have the full hours without impacting the neighbors. That's why I'm, at least that's why I'm here.
Ryan, do you have anything to say? Comments?
No, I mean, I think that, I think that the, I just, I will say this in response to that. I, we made an agreement on the hours with the neighbors, and I'm not willing to renege on that agreement. We essentially entered a contract with them about what hours would not be extended, and I'm not prepared to, to throw them under the bus by not continuing that agreement. Everybody may not agree with it, and it may not have been something I agreed with at the time, but at this point, I'm not willing to extend the hours, because we have a written agreement with some of the neighbors as part of essentially a settlement, and I would never go back on our word. That's something we wrote down, we promised, and I think we should stay the same. But as far as extending, I mean, like I said, I'm all for adding Court Six to the mix. I don't really care whether we go to Park and Rec or not. I think we've, I mean, sending it to a subordinate recreation commission at this point, after we beat this thing to death over so many meetings, seems a complete cop-out on making an actual decision and just pushes it down the road. But I would suggest that it's time to expand this, not to reduce it, and I don't think there's a consensus for that. But if, and the alternative, if we want to send it to another commission, we can. But I can say that, you know, I hope they find something else out, but it feels like there's not a lot of information we haven't already received with massive amounts of public communication already given to us about where we stand on this. And I think that, you know, I think it'd be much more appropriate for us just to decide what we're going to do and move forward, but I wouldn't be against it going to Park and Rec in an alternative other than, you know, by making a decision tonight.
I would just like to add one thing, and to avoid this situation from happening again when it goes to Parks and Recs, I think we need to have a public hearing so that the neighbors there can also express their feelings or thoughts.
Would you say that again? Please, I'm sorry.
So that we avoid this scenario again, when we do send it to Parks and Rec, we need to have some sort of public hearing, where everyone's invited, the neighbors, tennis players, pickleball players. And once again, and I'll go back to Mark Wile, we're all on the same team. Let's work it out. We can work this out. We just have to compromise and figure it out together.
May I ask a question? So, if it goes back, I'm not yet in favor of taking that extra step of going back to Park and Rec. But just to clarify, we would take to, the Park and Rec would get this report on all the meetings that we've had and all the options, and in addition, they would get clarity on the questions that came up tonight? I mean, I'm not quite understanding, because we've had so many public hearings about this. We've heard endless public testimony. I don't, it feels like we'll just be repeating what has already transpired unless there's new information as to options, like if there's more certainty as to when we can get Soul Park, is chaparral an option? It just feels like without additional information, Park and Rec would simply be rehashing what we're doing. You know, I'm not quite sure.
Bill?
I'd like to clarify something. Councilperson Francina, it's not going back to Park and Recreation. We never went to Park and Recreation.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
And so, I think that rather than having us, at this point, try to nail down with another council meeting, the facts about deed restrictions, about costs for temporary use, about all these issues that we've had a lot of back and forth without the facts being clarified. And what I would like to see on an accelerated basis is this go-to-park-and-recreation mission, have staff on an accelerated basis, provide the, you know, the city attorney, the staff, nail down exactly what we're talking about in terms of costs and deed restrictions and so on and so forth. What are the actual parameters here for making a decision? While we aggressively look at these other options, like maybe chaparral and our Sewell, but I just think that it's, given the disagreement among this council, that some sort of accelerated further definition of the facts and figures with Park and Recreation Commission would be the way to go right now.
Do you have a motion there?
I'll make that a motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
You know, Mayor, the other thing too, is we can't lose sight of it's the commission's responsibility to hold public hearings, and it's not just one, they can hold as many as they need to gather as much information and facts as they need. So, I don't know what the word accelerate means, but if we're going to go to Recreation and Parks, let's just give it to them, and we'll let them agendaize it and let them bring it back to us when they're ready to do so.
And the sense of my motion is be as quick as possible with that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. May we have roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
All right, thank you, and thank you all for participating, and we all look forward to a good solution to this. Yes. All right, let's take a five-minute break.
Heat up, warm up.
It's warm. I'm freezing.
I think that's the right thing.
Yeah. I think it's the right thing if the additional, yeah, with the additional information.
Montgomery and 412 Mallory Way. Just a reminder, there's no decision at this meeting. We're just providing feedback and direction to the planning commission. So with that, I will turn it over to you, James. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll keep it very brief as well. We have more information if more information is needed, but I will try to stick to the substance here. So, this slide here is really the proposal in summary form. This project, as people may recall, stems from actually the approval of the cottages of the flowers at 312 West Alisa Street back in 2007. There were time extensions granted to that project that took us to 2019. In 2019, May of 2019, the city council appealed an approval of a one-year retroactive time extension because the, and discussed the fact that the project did not address the requirement for affordable housing. And so, at that time, the city council appealed that and created a... And so at that time, the city council appealed that and created an ad hoc committee with councilmembers Blatz and Wyrick to work towards solving this issue. And since that time, the committee's been working on this project to develop a proposal that would help meet the requirement to replace affordable housing units. And so this slide is the summary. As you can see, and on my screen, the numbers are blocked. As you can see, the proposal would be to have four projects brought into a development agreement that would allow for several units to be developed, including affordable units, deed restricted affordable units. And so the four projects are the cottages among the flowers at 312 West Alisa Street. The project would propose 10 units total, which would, these would not be deed restricted affordable, but they would be subject to a 10-year rental covenant to ensure that they stay in the rental pool for 10 years. Second site is World University at 107 North Ventura Street. That project would, is proposed to convert the current office uses into 10 residential units. Three of those would be affordable, two at the moderate level and one at the low level. Additionally, this project would bring in a new site, the 304 South Montgomery Street, which is currently, currently undeveloped. 304 South Montgomery would have 15 units total developed, 15, or I'm sorry, 12 moderate and three low income deed restricted affordable units. And then lastly, the Mallory Way bungalows would be included in this project at 412 Mallory Way. And it would be a total of 30 units total at that site, with seven of the units being deed restricted affordable, six moderate and one low. And so again, just quickly, there's, we have a site map showing those four locations that would be subject to this agreement. And the project would, in summary, create 65 housing units in Ojai. 25 of those total across those four sites would be deed restricted affordable, 20 at a moderate level and five at a low level. The deed restriction would be, was, is proposed to be a 55-year deed restriction, meaning it would count towards our RENA housing number allocation, state housing allocation. Additionally, the property owner and developer have agreed to grant the city, or to improve the walking and hiking trail through Mallory Way and the cottages among the flowers, and that would be built and maintained by the owner, owner and developer. And so the development agreement proposes those four projects in a, in four phases. First cottages among the flowers, second World University, third Montgomery, and fourth Mallory Way bungalows, each being developed over a two-year period for a total of 10 years for those four phases. So with that, I think, like I said, we have a lot of additional information, we have several more slides, but for the sake of keeping it brief, we'll start with that, and I'm sure myself or the ad hoc committee would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, James. Any questions?
Yeah. Can you, can you go back to the first slide and clarify? So the cottage, the cottages among the flowers have, has a rental covenant, but what about the other three? Are they combination rental for sale or what?
And so the, the other three are, so the cottages among the flowers are rentals, the other three potentially could be sold at an affordable rate, but we've talked to the developer and his intention at this point is to keep them as rentals.
All three, except for Montgomery site?
Yes, but that is not, I will say that's not specified in the development agreement, so that would be one thing that the council, you know, the council may want to provide some direction on whether, which they'd prefer to, if they would prefer to keep it rental or to have them sold.
All right.
My understanding again, I'm sorry.
Oh, can you go to the second slide, or I think it was either second or third slide? Right there. Okay, the one that showed the phases, like one, two, and the first one was Mallory, cottages among the flowers.
First is cottages among the flowers, second is World University.
Okay.
Third is Montgomery.
Okay, so, you know, the developer owns a lot of properties, not just in Ojai, right, that they're working on?
Correct.
And this has been going on a long time, and the need for rentals is desperate. Okay? So I, I want a better understanding of, I mean, I'm sure it's finances and logistics, but World University, it seems like cottages among the flowers needs more work than World University.
Yes, so World University has had some remodel work done and it's, it requires a zone change. There would be some internal changes to convert it from office into residential use, but I think it's fair to say from the outside that World University is closer to being complete. But, but these phases were discussed with the property owner and the developer, and this, these were the phases that they, that we agreed that, based on their timeline and our timeline, these were the, this was the order that we each agreed to. So we did, or they did agree that cottages among the flowers would be the first one that they would, would be able to complete, so.
Okay, it's, it's a little bit difficult for me to understand that, but, because the cottages have to be completely, what's the word, raised, removed, right, starting from scratch.
I believe they're renovating those, those units.
They are renovating?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, then it makes a little more sense.
Yes, the agreement says renovation of those, of the eight existing units and the addition of two units.
Okay, thank you, because I thought they were so far gone, they had been allowed to deteriorate, they couldn't be rehabilitated. All right, okay, thank you, that's all.
Just a quick question, Mayor Stix of staff, and that is that what you're asking us tonight is to refer this to the planning commission with any additional direction?
Yes, and partially, it kind of follows the discussion of the last item. There's going to be a lot of additional work from this point forward, environmental review, which is both labor intensive and, and not cheap either for either, you know, for the applicant, and there's staff work and staff time spent on that. So the request, the question to council at this time is whether there's consensus to move this forward and spend that time and that energy on it.
And among, among the things we could do is, for example, have a stipulation of preference for all rentals, for example. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, we're looking for, you know, any general feedback on things like that. Another comment that I actually, I received from two separate council members, not at the same time, but was a comment about whether we could require any sort of preference for current tenants, which could be another thing that the city council could identify a preference for.
Just one, one question, I'm not sure, James, on that, how we, how we rejuvenate an existing house with the tenants in it, but that's a, it's a good question for down the road. The, you listed the pros and cons on this. The only thing that I remember asking for was the, trying to develop our right-of-way, our, our public land to the west of Mallory.
Mm-hmm.
And was that, was that question asked of them, and what was their response?
Well, so are you talking about the, the trail through Mallory and cottages?
No, he's talking, I think you're talking about the right-of-way.
The right-of-way strip to the west.
Linear, linear right-of-way.
So that hasn't been discussed. We discussed the trail that goes through Mallory Way and cottages among the flowers.
Yeah, we own the, as I look at the map here, I'm pretty sure we own an easement from, I can't read the writing, it's so small, let's see even smaller one, I don't know.
Oh, yes, so I think, are you talking about, early on, this has been ongoing for a couple of years, just like the pickleball discussion, so it's hard to keep some of the timelines straight, but early on, we did ask if the developer, if we granted them that easement, if they would be able to add more units there.
Right.
And so they had indicated that they looked at it, they had already had their plans, and that when they looked at it, they couldn't really get any more units in, it would just be spacing them out more. So they asked not to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Any public comment on this item, Gail?
Let me check. Oops. Okay, we have one person who's raised their hand, I'll go ahead and call on him, that's Mr. Miley. If there's anyone else in the Zoom meeting who is here to speak on this item, if you would raise your hand, I will go ahead and call on you, and also, oh, I was just about to say, we also, we have Jeff Becker in the meeting, and he just raised his hand, so I'll go ahead, since I just said Mr. Miley's name, I will go ahead and call on him first, and then after that, I'll bring on in Jeff Becker. And again, if anyone else is here to speak on this item, go ahead and raise your hand, and I'll call on you as well. Mr. Miley, you should be able to speak, if you can unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Sure, thank you. You hear me?
Yes.
I know the ideas behind this development agreement have been in the works for a number of years. I participated in some past discussions, I'm aware of past details in some agreements. Considering the rules and regulations of the past, and the growing need for more housing units within our city, what is presented here I like. I remember what it looked like years ago, it could have provided much less benefits. The city and developer worked together to create a reasonable concept, providing replacement in affordable housing, new market rate rentals, conversion of an office complex into rentals, a fully affordable housing development on South Montgomery Street, and a compromise agreement for keeping the current cottage of the flowers rentals for 10 years. Folks currently living in affordable price units should be able to get preferences when new rentals are available. The Mallory Way rentals, which go back to 1947, are small cottages that were built for veterans, 25 exist today, seven will be rehabbed, the remaining 18 will be removed and replaced with 23 new market rate. 23 of the 30, 23% of the 30 houses will be dedicated to affordable, which is really great. The city gets replacement housing for those older units rented at prices considerably affordable, with the new ones covered by 55-year-old affordable covenants. In addition, there are new market rate rentals. Ojai needs new rentals. Compromises in creating and development like this make products work. I like situations where winners exist on all sides, and here they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, and next I will bring in Mr. Becker. Mr. Becker, you should be able to talk, if you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good, good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. Sorry to keep you guys so late tonight, I know it's a little chilly out there, at least it looks that way on, on Zoom. Thank you guys for considering the proposed development agreement. It's obviously been in the works for quite a long time, I'd rather not hash that out, it would last longer than the pickleball discussion, but the two ownership entities, the bungalows, Ojai Bungalows and Greenhawk LLC, have tried to work with city staff and a couple of the council members on the ad hoc committee to come up with solutions to allow us to move forward and get these projects going and provide, we think, some really nice beneficial opportunities for both parties, covering a whole gamut of different housing options on the affordable side and market rate, which I think we all agree the, the city needs desperately, and includes repurposing the cottages among the flowers, the eight that exist there now, along with the, the old World University, which used to be the original city hall as well. So we really look forward to working with you guys as quickly as possible to move it forward and hopefully reboot the cottages and commence construction on that, which is what we, we were stopped doing early on once we got into this. So happy to answer any questions that you guys may have, and look forward to working with the city on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, we will move on to discussion. Randy, and then Bill?
Just real, real quick, I'd like to thank Mr. Becker, and I'd like to thank the staff, and I'd like to thank the ad hoc committee for putting together a, a great, great, I believe, agreement for the community. Initially, there was not any affordable housing in the discussion, and for us to walk away with what we did, thanks again to the willingness of the developer and council and, and staff. I just, it's, it just shows you when everyone's in agreement, which way to go, we can get there. Good job.
I want to give another thank you to Mr. Bill Miley.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bill is too modest, Bill, if you're listening, he is too modest. He was the one that came to me with the initial research about the situation in terms of the general plan and our affordable, our affordable preservation ordinance, that frankly, our community development director at the time had overlooked. And Bill, Mr. Bill Miley takes a lot of credit for our going from zero to 25 here with his, his diligence and his sense of citizen responsibility, and I, we'd be remiss in not giving Bill Miley some credit for this.
Thank you, Bill, and get well soon.
Okay, I have a question when it's my turn.
Well, on discussion, you have a question, though?
Yeah.
Or comment?
Yeah, is it, when it goes before the planning commission, is that when we, or what do you call it, conditions of approval, that's when there, there will be a discussion about electrifying the buildings and where green standards, gray water, rainwater harvesting, permeable paving, you know, all, no, and I don't know if legally you can say that these compounds won't use bait boxes or pesticides, that's for when it goes before the planning commission.
The planning commission, yeah, can, can review all those. I, I would say if, if you want to ensure, and we'll make sure to pass on the information, but you can always, you know, ask them to look specifically at that as part of their review.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Susa, I had the same thoughts, but again, I realize that this is just the agreement, that all of the, once it goes to planning, there's still a lot of legwork that has to go on in the creation of the documents.
Yes.
That the community gets to weigh in on.
I just, my, my, my concern is water. There are two fundamentally different approaches to water. We can use what we save, what we conserve to increase growth, development, I'm not in favor of this. I want to increase our reserves rather than over commit, so I just think it's prudent at this time to do anything we can do to apply our extra water to reserves rather than new development, and although I'm very, looking forward to seeing what the planning commission sends back to us, so let's, let the planning commission do their job.
May I ask you?
Bill, and then Randy, and then, yep.
Yeah, I, when it comes time for a motion, I, my motion would include referring to the planning commission for further deliberation with a distinct preference for these to be restricted to rentals and continuous rentals.
And, and may I ask the city, oh, okay.
I think one of the most important things that we negotiated was originally, we were going to do a concrete culvert through the, the middle of the Mallory.
Right.
Conversion. And the majority of council at the time knew that we needed, what is it, capture sink and?
Right, we needed to sink and slow and recharge.
Sink and slow and recharge, and that's what we did, so.
Take away that.
Again, there's a strong recognition of water in this community, and again, originally it was going to be put it in a concrete channel and run it down the road. And the, the understanding of council, and again, we would all agree with you, Mayor, water is something that we have to look at. And again, that'll be, that'll be part of the next phase is gray water, storm water. storm water, rain gutter. There's just so many things that they can do. And I know that Mr. Becker, who lives in this community, is going to want to do the good things. So there might even be a way for them to do some work on calculating actual usage and what they can save, so that they can demonstrate that they're being cost effective, and thinking of the environment like we do.
Yeah. Mayor, are you also objecting to the cottages among the Flowers? Because that's repurposing, I mean, their only new development would be the Phase Three, because everything else already exists. The bungalows exist. That's where people that first came to Ojai used to go. There are lots of people, that was their first, first home. And, and I was thrilled when I saw that World University is going to be converted into 10 residential units. So this is our, the only new building is Phase Three. And I looked at that lot, and that's also in keeping, I feel, with, you know, small developments. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what your objection is.
I'd like to see what the planning commission comes back with. I just, you know, we need to save water. We're in the middle of aridification. We are potentially could run out of water. So at this point, I think it's very prudent to just take a big pause and not, and think about it. So anyway, but the motion, Bill already made.
My motion would be to refer to the planning commission as recommended by staff with a stipulation with, for preference to that these be designated as rental units, not subject to separate title sale.
I have one question about the motion of the city attorney. Can we stipulate that rental priority goes to current residents?
By that, do you mean current residents of each of the facilities or current city residents?
Current residents at the, the only place I think there's current residents would be the Mallory Way bungalows. I believe the cottages are all vacant.
Yeah, that can be, I'm not sure if there are or aren't people in the cottages, but that can be done. And our code has several existing.
I would accept that in my motion.
Protections as well, as was identified by.
I would accept that preference in my motion.
Okay, you got, you got that?
Um, yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to see how that's worked out, only because there's going to be a refurbishment cost, which might be an increase in cost of rental. So if you're saying, does that person have first right, I might go along with that.
I think it's just a direction.
Yeah, first right. If they can't afford it, or it can't be worked out, that's different.
There's an existing body of law that we can tap into that's developed rules for how a existing tenant replacement preference program works, that we can, we can parrot from that. And the general way it works is folks who are in the unit before it's refurbished, get that first right to return at whatever the new rent is for that unit, which then taps into affordable at very low or low or whatever.
Right.
If they can afford the rent.
So we'll, we'll bring that to the planning commission then with this.
Yeah, we'll bring the planning commission the proposals.
I would agree with you.
Okay, great.
I'll second that.
Okay, me, we have the roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrek?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving on to our last item, number six, the city treasurer vacancy.
Yeah, so we, we are required by state law to fill our city treasurer vacancy by, I believe it's February 21, I think, is, is the date that we had indicated. So we talked about this at the last council meeting. The council agreed to, that we would immediately advertise for the city treasurer position. We would solicit applications, and then we'd bring those applications back tonight. We actually did receive two applications, which have been provided to council, one from Steve Olson and one from Jeff Rains. And so those applications are, again, have been provided to council, and the item will allow for council to choose to appoint one of those two candidates. So I believe that the candidates are available online, or maybe that's the one shadow I see out. Yeah, it looks like it. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I believe they're available to answer them as well.
Okay, Susie, you have a question?
So we have two excellent applicants, and we can only pick one. So my question is, my recollection is that the city treasurer, we've never had, like, an election when there's two candidates for a city treasurer. But if the other applicant wanted to challenge, they could both be on the ballot? Is that how it works?
That is an option for the council, yes. The council could direct a special election to be held, and then both of those two, but the key is, it wouldn't limit it to just those two. It'd be anybody who files the right.
I wasn't suggesting a special election. I was looking, this is going to be on the ballot anyway, right, in November?
Ah, yes, it will be on the ballot in November automatically for the, the last half of the late Mr. Rains' term, from the period from 2022 to 2024. So whatever happens, the second half of the term is on the ballot.
Okay, so at that point, anyone can be on the ballot?
Anyone who lives in the city of Ojai and is elect or over 18.
That's my question. Okay. And it's good, and the public can, that will be known to the public. Yeah, okay. Any public comments on this item, Gail?
Let me check. We do have Steve Olson, one of the applicants, is available on Zoom. I can bring him in when you want. But for the other people who are listening on Zoom, if any of you are here to comment on this item, if you would use the raised hand function, I'll go ahead and call on you. And nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Move on to discussion.
Is there no public comment?
He's a candidate. So are we going to vote on a candidate tonight? And so are we, is this?
What happened to Steve Olson on Zoom?
He's, he's here. Do you want me to bring him in?
So let's, anyone, let's start.
Do we want to solicit a statement from each candidate?
Would you like to start?
You know, I read their application.
Let's go one at a time. Bill, you want to start? You want to go?
Okay.
I'd assume vote. So do we need to nominate one person? How's, how's it work, just like the normal nominating process?
It's a standard nominating process. So it's a nomination. Nominations don't require a second, so it's a nomination, and then any other nominations, and then a vote. And obviously, there's only two, so it's a nomination.
For two guys, this is going to be interesting. So, Mayor, if you'll allow me, I will nominate Mr. Rains. And I guess I look for a second. Yes? And if I don't receive a second, that makes an easy.
That may be your answer.
That may be the answer to the second phase.
Then.
Mayor Sticks.
Could I nominate Mr. Olson?
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, can we have a roll call on that? Gail, please?
Well, wait a second. What happened to mine?
Well, you didn't get a second.
Didn't get a second.
So one note on that is nominations don't need a second.
That's right.
But given that there's only two, I think the, we could run a vote on Rains first, and then a vote on Olson second. Or we could run a vote that is, there's two choices. Instead of saying yes or no, say Rains or Olson.
Well, we just did that, when I didn't get a second.
Okay.
You end up sort of six to one, half dozen the other.
Okay. Why don't we just go vote one, you know, each one of us?
Yeah, why don't we, I, if, I'd suggest, Gail can do a roll call, and each person can choose who they're voting for.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call, please, Gail.
Okay. Councilmember Blatts?
Well, now, we're not picking, we're not yes or no on each one. We're picking one of the two. Is that correct?
Correct.
Completely weird. All right. Then I would go with Mr. Olson.
Councilmember Francina?
I'll, I'll vote for Mr. Olson.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Oh, I strongly vote for Mr. Rains.
I wish I could vote for both.
Mayor Sticks?
Mr. Olson.
Councilmember Wyrek?
Mr. Olson.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Rains and Mr. Olson. Much appreciated.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's a win-win.
It's a win-win, really.
Yeah, thank you both.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you both. I know that you guys were the two people everybody thought of, so we, we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Much appreciated. Thank you. All right, we will move on to council member reports.
It's cold. I don't have one.
I just want a big shout out for Martin Luther King celebration last week. It was really wonderful. Ojai Youth Foundation did an incredible job, and amazing kids participate. Really beautiful event. Okay, city managers report.
Just one quick item. Tomorrow is our, tomorrow at 6:00 PM, virtually, so the login information is on the, on our city website and our Facebook page. But tomorrow at 6:00 PM is our community, first ever community conversation regarding police services. Chief Rivera and I will be giving short presentations, and then mostly what we're hoping to do is that we're hoping to just take feedback and comments from the community regarding what we're doing well and what we can do better. So I encourage everybody who is interested to attend. We know there's a lot of priorities and different things going on. So we'll, we'll hold this first one, and hopefully we are able to answer some questions and, and have a good conversation. So.
Sticks, first of all, congratulations on an excellent audit.
Oh, thank you.
That is something that is not often appreciated. This audit, the lack of exceptions, that is an accomplishment. The lack of drama with an audit is always a great thing to congratulate staff for. So great job for staff in terms of handling, everything to do with finance, and.
Well, wait a second. What about Mayor, Mayor, Betsy and myself for being on the committee?
Congratulate you guys too.
How much work we put into that?
The audit, the audit was.
Congratulations, guys, all the way around. Okay, it was an excellent audit. Second, I really urge the community to step up and, you know, express their view of how we want to evolve, especially the effective partnership with the Sheriff's Department and community policing.
Yep.
This is an opportunity that frankly, other cities do not provide their citizens, and we are providing them that. And please take advantage of it, everyone that might be listening still this, this evening. Please participate with how you, your vision of, of how we evolve the relationship with the Sheriff's Department as an effective client partnership.
If I could add to that, and I'll keep it very brief, but you, you said something that is a big focus of tomorrow is community-based policing, and that is, you know, it's the buzzword right now. But what we've learned is everybody we talk to, it means something a little different. So tomorrow, one of our goals is to hear from everybody what, what they want from that community-based policing.
Thank you so much, James, for making that happen.
Thank you.
Okay, future agenda items?
Couple.
Okay, go ahead.
That's okay. Two things. One is, you know, I've been talking for a while now about the need to update our CEQA criteria to be consistent with the kind of characteristic outcomes that we want from the planning processes and planning commission reviews. And things have gotten a little ridiculous, frankly, with the parking situation with a couple of recent applicants. And I would really like us to, you know, and we've, we've been supposedly bringing up the CEQA issue for a while now. I think we need to bring it forward really quickly. Because, for example, I want to, you know, consider how we, you know, we don't want asphalt parking next to every business. You know, we may want to define a parking perimeter. Like, let's look at parking capacity, including street parking within, say, a three or five-minute walk, if somebody's repurposing a small building, as opposed to kind of getting absurd with, with what we're requiring of them. That's within this council's discretion, and we really need to try to, I just, I just urge us to get this on the agenda as soon as we can, to discuss this matter. And the other thing is, I think we need to look at this fire map issue, and maybe look at, you know, in terms of designating the entire city as a high-risk area or a high-fire-prone area, and back that up with some fire science. If, rather than just, okay, it's a, it's something we would like to have for various reasons, see if a, if maybe a proposal for council actually do a fire propagation or fire science study to back that up, might be something to consider as a future agenda item. So those are my two.
And we can bring that up tomorrow morning in the disaster council. Okay, anything else? All right, well.
You know, along that lines, Mayor, I just, prior to that, let's get a cost on what, on what that might look like.
That's what I'm asking for.
I think that's more important.
That's what I'm asking for, come to council with a staff report of what that would cost.
We did have two reports come out about, you know, one was for fire hardening, and one was for declaring a high fire zone.
The whole city.
The whole city. So maybe we start there and look at what they, and move that forward.
Right, but I think it's, if we indeed can back up that designation with a finding, there's some, that advances our local discretion in the face of the state trying to take some away from us.
I agree.
We might want to explore.
And I think the other factor, we're going to get an update on tomorrow, too, is the Fire Safe Council and their grant, which is allowing them to do the, the assessment citywide. So.
There are fire modeling, you know, and if we could show that it, we may face conditions.
Yep.
You know, like, a little shift in wind from the Thomas Fire, how much of that, how much would we have taken out if we hadn't gotten lucky?
Yep.
And that's part of a finding that we should be able to back up if possible. And just get a proposal of what that would cost to, to really certify.
Okay.
I think.
And then just the local CEQA guidelines, my recollection is on the planning commission work plan, and that they haven't, they haven't reviewed it yet, but we'll make sure it gets prioritized.
I think we got a problem here that we need to address. What we're, some of the imposition we're doing on some people, it's, it's a problem.
Yeah.
Can I clarify that? CEQA dictates thus that we require parking to remodel office buildings? That's a CEQA issue?
No, those are two different.
It sure doesn't sound like.
Two different issues.
That's why I need an understanding, Bill.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is that we can define the parameters under which planning commission does evaluations.
Right.
And this is one of the parameters of, you know, do we say that parking's got to be, you know, on the property only?
No, no, I agree, I agree with that. I just didn't understand how CEQA.
Does that lead to outcomes that we really want in this city? That's what I'm trying to talk about. And I, I'm sorry, I did conflate, and I'm sorry.
No, I was just trying to get clarification on it. I didn't know CEQA was our parking.
Well, I was, I was talking, there are some things we can do with CEQA thresholds that are more consistent with what we want in terms of our city. And then I was conflating that with another thing about how we could set parking parameter, parking evaluations.
Okay, well, I want to thank my esteemed colleagues for bearing me cold and.
Wait, wait, one more question.
I've never seen my breath so much.
Is Drown on the agenda next time?
Yes, Drown is on February 8.
Okay, okay. Now can I thank, I want to thank you, all of you. Thank you, James Hahn. Thank you, Doogie back there. Thank you, Matt and James. And it's a wrap. Adjourned.